I've called to order this special meeting of the Nassau City Council at 4:30 PM on March 18th, 2024. And we are going to dispense with item number two. And any remarks of visitors?
Yes, sir.
None, okay. We'll go to item number four, it's workshop to discuss fiscal year 24-25 budget considerations, goals, and priorities. Mr. Weeks?
Mayor, Members of Council, and Public. So if you remember back during last budget season, when I guess was around August, middle of August, we bring you a budget retreat. Staff puts together over, you know, several month period, a proposed budget. We bring that to you during one of your regular council meetings. And last year, we brought to you a lot of new supplemental items and included quite a bit, a listing of new staff. And council asked that, moving forward, that you not be surprised anymore in August timeframe when we bring those to you. And asked to move up and have a discussion early on before we actually start the budget process. And so this year, starting in December, staff started getting together and looking at any new staffing, as well as programs, capital improvements, and those type things. And putting together a list of items that we wanted to bring to you during this budget retreat. And so we're calling it a 24-25 council budget workshop. And so we got several different things that we want to talk about. The last part that we're going to talk about is parks. And so tonight, we're not going to go too much in depth on the parks. We're going to update you based on our Parks Board meeting that we had and kind of give you the next steps for that. But we are going to have some conversation about parks because we do need to have that conversation. But hopefully, you, within your packet, I know it was a lengthy packet. The PowerPoint might look really long to you in front of you, but I think we'll be able to whittle through this fairly quickly. It's going to be at y'all's pleasure of how long we're here for it. Staff is here to answer any detailed questions you might have. Ideally, we're not going to try to get into the weeds of it, but we just want to at least have some conversations about how we go about putting together the budget over the next couple of months. And so the first thing we want to talk about is, there's a couple of slides here where we talk about funding mechanisms. And so there's an opportunity for us to do what we call internal loans. So governmental entities are allowed to loan themselves money. And so if you remember, governmental entities, municipalities, are based on fund accounting. And so we have a general fund, we got a water fund, we got a sewer fund, we got a natural gas fund, a capital projects fund, we got all these funds. One of the funds we have is our cemetery operating fund. And the cemetery operating fund is the revenue for closing graves, for grave spaces, and those type things. The fund balance, the amount available to spend, has grown significantly in that. And that's not, that is not the permanent fund, the one that was endowed to us that we can only spend the interest portion of. This is the operating portion of it. As of the end of February, we had around a $680, nearly $682,000 fund balance. And we're allowed to loan ourselves, loan another fund, money to be able to spend as long as you provide our auditors with some type of agreement. It's just like you going out for debt, but you don't have to have the debt issuance cost, you don't have to have the credit ratings, you're basically just loaning yourself, and you have an amortization schedule you put together, council agrees on whatever interest rate you're going to charge your, charge that fund back, and then you define what period of time you want to repay it. And so the general fund would be repaying it. And so there are a couple of items that we want to talk about that we could utilize the internal loan funding mechanism, and the general fund would pay that back over a period of time, back to the cemetery fund. Ideally, not more than $500,000 would be, we pull from that fund balance.
Just a question about that fund.
Yes, sir.
Where, where has money been channeled from? All the other funds or just from general revenue?
So you're talking about just for the, for the cemetery?
Yeah.
So the cemetery, we usually budget around, I think it's around less than $100,000 for maintenance items. And so right this year, we budgeted, I think, $70,000 for maintenance. And that's, that, that's why we're not taking all the way down to the entire full, full amount there. That $681 includes spending some money. And so this year, we, of course, you know, we just had the street project done, we got some new streets put down in there. We've, we've done a lot of street work in the cemetery, and we're in the process of cutting a lot of dead trees, 30-plus dead trees in there, we're looking at putting a fence up. And that's what we're going to utilize this year's funding for that. But generally, on an average, we get about $60,000 in revenue from selling graves, closing the graves, and multiple other revenue sources just from cemetery operations.
Well, then if it's, if it's, if it's risen as it has over the years, why are you doing a loan rather than just putting it as a line item for an expenditure?
So you can, you only can, you can only spend those funds for those purposes. And those purposes for cemetery. And so at some point, either we'll need to buy more land for the cemetery, we might need to do more street work in there, and so that's ultimately what you would use.
Rocket savings account for that.
Correct. But we can't, you can't use those funds and say, hey, we want to go over here and do the design work for a fire station. You can't, you can't cross the funds line. You can loan the general fund money or the capital projects money to be able to do those things, but you can't transfer the funds. It's just like water and sewer funds, water rates are there to provide water services, not for providing police services. So you got, you got to operate on a fund basis and what those funds specifically are for.
But this, but this money is all in the same account?
Yes, sir.
This is just a, an accounting exercise?
Yes, sir.
In moving the same.
Yes, sir. So we, we are based on a pooled cash system, and so based on where we're fund balance in here, we have, that amount gets pulled from our 20-something million dollars we have in the bank account. And so we're asking, you know, one of the options is, is asking up to $500,000 to do an internal loan. Not asking for the decision to, to move forward with the loan today because there's a process we have to go through, we'll have to do a resolution and actually an ordinance and those type things to move forward with it. It's just, I'm providing you with some avenues of funding some of these capital items we're going to talk about later.
A question.
Yes, sir.
The, the fund that's in the cemetery right now, it, it is taking care of the maintenance of the cemetery, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
With the roads and trimming the trees and?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And that wouldn't be a part of the loan, that would be?
Correct. Yeah. So again, we get about, I think it's around $60,000 in revenue every year. So we would, that's what we usually budget, and the fund balance has just been accumulating over the years.
Yep.
And that's why I'm saying, I'm not proposing that we pull down that entire fund balance. I'm just saying, no more than $500,000. But again, we'll talk about what we could use those funds for, but I just want to make sure you understand, this is a funding mechanism you can pull from. Okay, that's, that's one. The next one is debt issuance. And so debt issuance, we reached out to our financial advisor, U.S. Capital Advisors, which is James Gilli Jr., so I don't, if you know, I know, Mr. Harris, you probably don't know James. But he's our financial advisor, we have a third-party financial advisor that works with our bond counsel and advises us on issuing debt. Similar to what the school district has, school district has their own financial advisor, the city has their financial advisor. And so I asked him to put together a scenario of a 20, 25, and 30-year debt issuance, and I wanted it based on $1 million. And so for every $1 million, how much of a tax increase would you need to generate X amount of dollars for, for the debt payment? And so within your packet, there is a spreadsheet that looks just like this. And so, I'm sorry, within your, your PowerPoint presentation. And so the net taxable value is around $690 million. Our current M&amp;O rate is 46.89 cents. And then our INS rate, interest and sinking, is around 5.32 cents. And so he shows you here a 20, 25, and 30-year breakdown of a million, 5 million, 10 million, 15, 20, and 30. And so depending on how much a fire station costs, and because that's the primary purpose that we would need to issue debt at this point, is for a fire station. So if you, if you're looking at a $15 million fire station at 30 years, based on our assessed valuation as it is now, that would mean nearly a 14-cent tax increase. Okay. We can go back to this later, but I just wanted to kind of let you know how this, how this works for issuing debt. There's another funding mechanism, is through the U.S. Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. At your last council meeting, we brought to you an item where we wanted to submit an application for dispatch consoles for a grant and loan program. Similarly, that same program, it's the Community Facilities Direct Loans, Grants, and Loan Guarantee Program. They offer loans. Generally, it's at a less interest rate than what the market is using. So over there on that other sheet where you had the different market rates, it went from 4.2% all the way to 4.65%. Theirs right now is below 4%. I know that the city of Brenham just issued, I can't remember, it was 20 or 30-year debt, and it came out at 3.5. So our financial advisors gave you worst-case scenario on here. But generally, a USDA loan is much less than what the market has out there for tax-exempt. Additionally, you can go out 40 years. And so if you'll know, our current fire station is at 39 years. And so there is an opportunity that if we want to pursue this, we could ask for a grant and the remaining on a loan. And so there's this, this opportunity here for issuing debt through the USDA.
What's the ratio, loan versus grant?
So the grant is up to 75% of the cost. I know that our fire chief has had discussions in the past. They, they don't, they don't project that we'll get nearly that much, but until you submit it, they base it on the 2020 census. So we're under 10,000 population, so as long as we're under 10,000 population, we're good. So now's a good time before the 2030 census goes out. Also, they use the household median income levels, and they base it on our budget. And so ideally, they, they want to see that you're being prudent with your funds and not spending frivolously, and make sure that you really need, you really need it. And so there's a lot of process that we'd have to go through, through this grant process, but it definitely is an option to try the grant loan. And the last item through funding mechanisms, I have spoken to each of you, and staff is aware that looking at reprioritizing our budgeted funds. So in our current budget, we have a taxable value of around $687 million, based on our M&amp;O tax rate of 46 cents. That generates around $3.2 million in tax revenue. A one-cent tax increase would generate around $68,756. So for every one cent of property tax increase, we'd generate around $69,000 in revenue. If you'll remember, back two years ago, we issued debt for the water tower and water wells and those type things. That was around $7 million that we issued that debt for. That's around a $550,000 annual debt payment. So just doing the math there, you can figure out how many cents to get $7 million worth of proceeds. And so when you take that and you look at what the financial advisors, you're pretty close to the, to the 14 cents. And so with that, during the budget process last year, I know that several of you asked me to provide you with some opportunities for budget cuts. And based on that, I came back and prioritized the budget cuts. And the number one item that I proposed was eliminating the Texas Birthday Bash. So Texas Birthday Bash expenditures in our current budget is $419,385. To offset that, we have revenue of around $135,475. This equates to a budget loss for this event of around $283, nearly $284,000. Now, we don't have the final numbers in yet, but we're working on it. It's going to be pretty close to that number, which that represents nearly 4 cents on our tax rate. And then I go back and I went back to the prior year, the actual numbers. We received $169,870 in revenue, we totally spent around 332 for a net loss of 163. My understanding is, for the last several years, I don't even know if it ever broke even. I know that there was discussions that the hotel motel funds were helping, and as you know, the hotel motel funds can't be used for these purposes, we could use it, a portion of it, for advertising, but you don't use it for fireworks, you don't use it for these type events. And so those net losses are not sustainable. And so I think that reprioritizing those funds that we budget and reallocating those to other purposes, such as moving it over to quality-of-life projects for the Navasota Center, the swimming pool, Brulee Park, other parks, and possibly the library, I think is an opportunity where you can issue debt above and beyond what we're saying for the fire station, issue debt and then move those funds that you budgeted for the Navasota, for the Texas Birthday Bash to fund those debt payments. At some point, I think that we, we've got to start getting back to providing the necessary services to the community, streets, quality of life, water, sewer. I know that we're starting that, but I think we need to really hone in and start working on that. Now, understanding that Texas Birthday Bash is an event that Navasota's had for over 12 years, it is a very highly anticipated event. I have reached out to the private sector, and private sector is much willing to take over this event. With that, ideally, the company would be requesting use of our public safety, so our police services for security, as well as some type of cash injection up to maybe $50,000 to be the title sponsor. And that'll guarantee, number one, it'll retain the Texas Birthday Bash name, it'll still have City of Navasota associated with it, and number three, it will, it will remain in Navasota. And so I think that is something that I want, I want us to understand. I have, in preparing the budget, I prefer not to put the Texas Birthday Bash in there other than the $50,000, unless council directs me they want to see the full thing put in there. I think it's, it's, to be fiscal responsible, that it's time to let the private sector take over that event and let them handle it, and whatever that looks like, the city would still be involved somehow with that entertainment company and making sure that we're bringing an event to Navasota that everybody will enjoy. This will allow us to continue doing our Sounds of Summer, Freedom Festival, and the hometown, the Home for the Holidays events. We're not saying cut any of that, we're saying cut this one event here.
I would like to ask Bird and Bernie, I think you all, it's been on the council here the longest, when this Birthday Bash was started, was it started as a profit event?
No, it was never intended to make, to make profit.
We were hoping to make it, to break even.
Yeah.
Eventually.
And it was mainly to draw attention to Navasota from, to bring visitors, you know, to attract attention to Navasota. And a lot of the funding for it was, was from hot funds, which that's the only thing you can spend that, part of that money on. But it hasn't been able to perform to a point that we're able to get cover, even cover costs, so.
I mean, I'll tell you that sales this year was, was way under what we did last year. You know, though there might have been some marketing and some entertainment concerns with it, it still was down. I know that us looking at our sales tax over that weekend, I know many of you have businesses downtown, you don't see a huge spike in your sales tax, it doesn't really do a lot for sales tax.
It doesn't.
The idea is to get Navasota's name out there. I think there's other ways and other things that we've been doing that's gotten Navasota's name out there without?
Well, I think, I think it's, I think it's done what it was intended to do, because I think most people would have to agree, at least over the past 10 years, you know, our population's grown, we have thriving businesses, the things that have come from having the festival or having the bash, but the way I've been thinking about it more and more is maybe it's run its course. And not to say that it couldn't continue from the private sector, which I think is probably the best way to go about it. That way, we're not being held, we're not the ones that who, you know, are out there for the expense of it.
When you said the $50,000, is that included with the PD's security?
No, so that's total. That's total. That's total.
So that was going to be my question, so are they paying, this company would pay for our public safety?
So we would, we would be, we would be giving up $50,000 in either in-kind or in-kind plus cash, total. And right now, I don't know, I have a total number, I think the chief was saying it's around $20,000 that we usually spend on public safety, security, on the Birthday Bash. But $50,000 is the total max, either providing security services or, and/or cash. It's not, it's not both, not $50,000 cash plus the security, it's $50,000 in total.
I think it's also caused, over the years, more issues downtown with the way it's laid out, almost like you can't get a perfect layout.
Yeah.
And it's always going to upset something, and it's usually post office or some service that's downtown that you're not able to get to. And I know it's only for a couple of days, or, you know, my thought was last year and a couple of years before is maybe think about doing it just for one day instead of, you know, just do a Saturday, just a one-day event, maybe as, as an option as well.
When we first got into it, we got into it because tourism was the, the way to go if you wanted to raise any revenue for the city.
Well, I think it did its job, I do, I really do, over the, over the years, though there is a cost involved. And again, it was never, not from day one, intended to be a profitable thing, it was meant, because that's when you spend tourism dollars, you hope for the return in sales tax, obviously. That didn't happen.
And I will take?
But it did, but it did draw a lot of attention in Navasota, and I think it was beneficial for the time it ran.
Yeah, and the other part for the hotel, the hotel fund stuff, so, I mean, we nearly booked the entire comfort suites just for the entertainment to stay. So you're, you're, you're spending money, if you use the hotel motel fund, you're actually getting your money, it's a circle, you're not getting any additional money.
And I think by going to the private sector, you're not going to have all that expense, but you would still have the name, still be attached to it, it would still continue. And hopefully, the expertise of that entity would bring in big names, you know, as, as maybe weren't quite as able to do this year, just because of issues with, different issues. I mean, we had one performer that ended up going to jail, so I mean, there were some things that we couldn't have predicted. But, but again, I think, I think, I think it's a positive thing to look at the private sector because I think we can be a lot of continuing benefit, but without the.
And, and so here's the other thing, so we would be entering into an agreement with the third-party entertainment company. So there'll be a lot of opportunity for the city to work out a lot of, some details in it, whether, whatever that would, would look.
And it may not even be downtown.
Correct, it could be somewhere else, but it will be in the city of Navasota. It will still maintain the city of Navasota as the, as long as we provide the sponsorship amount, it'll have City of Navasota's name attached to it, it will still be the Texas Birthday Bash, it'll still be on the same weekend, as always. It might be just a one-day event, and, you know, there could be possibly where we could put a entertainment committee together that we work with the third-party vendor on trying to come up with some entertainment that would please everybody, so.
Because I can say from a personal standpoint, from the, from classic rock, that my, our regular Saturday sales are about the same. It didn't, it didn't generate any more.
Ours were no more. We've, we've done better on dead weekends than we do for Birthday Bash, but we've always been one of the businesses that touted the fact that it didn't matter what money we made, that the people that were here in town, a lot of them had never been here before, and that they would be back. And I always see that, that's something we always see. I, and I've had this discussion with multiple people, I personally think that it has grown beyond what we can handle. It's not, and the city does a wonderful job, the staff busts their tails, exhaustion, everything else, everything that y'all do, and that's not something y'all do on a regular basis. And generally, a company that does that on a regular basis, it's like a fine-oiled machine, they don't have to think about it, it's done, they accept the liability, they have to do all the things, they know the entertainment industry, they have contact lists for big names that they can get good deals on, that we don't have, we don't have any of that. And I don't think it's fair to city staff to try to tackle something much larger than what they have had to tackle in the past. It's a lot of work. And they have a lot to do already.
Where staff would probably like to actually attend it.
Running the city is a lot.
It's still working. Right? I don't know.
I think to its detriment, it became very competitive and competing with ourselves to do it bigger and better every year, type thing, I think we maybe went too far too fast.
And also, we did, there was a lot of thought process put into the, the date of it as well. And I think that, I want to definitely suggest that that not change, because I think Texas Independence, and the fact that we're close to Washington on the Brazos, and that connection needs to stay. I don't think we want to look at changing the date.
Again, I don't want to change the date, and I do want us to have conversations.
No other big events around us, and we chose that date on purpose.
And want to be able to have a conversation with Washington on the Brazos about not having an event on our city date.
Yeah, they need to, they need to play nice.
So if we're going private sector, is that done on a yearly basis? Do we sign a multiple-year contract?
I think we, I think you sign a multiple-year, multi-year, I, I would, I would think, I haven't talked to them yet, but, about it, but I'm sure it'd be multi-year.
Well, and this would be any entertainment company that wants to do it, yes, that we would understand?
Sure, yeah, sure.
Well, you know, Josh, from, you and I was involved as we were in Blues Fest, that we encouraged that group to have someone run that festival instead of a volunteer group, and unfortunately, I think that's why it's no longer here, because the ones that led it, one of them passed away, and the whole group just went away. And I think, of course, they, they liked to keep that festival small and intimate that wasn't intended, they didn't want it to really grow, they kind of wanted, and I say they because I'm, I know one time I think you were on the board, so, but I think there's a lot of similarities in that.
One of the things that, for this event, that I think that we could encourage others to, to help us is, it, it needs to be more community involvement. I think there's one sector of the community that actually attended, but I think that reaching out to the high school band, trying to get them involved to do something, get the elementary school kids to do something that would bring families down, which I think is why we missed on the sales and the businesses, because the focus was. Because the focus was pulling people into the fence, as opposed to having people do something along Washington.
Have some elements of nostalgia days.
That's kinda what I'm thinking, yeah.
I've always considered the fact that when people are coming for a concert or, or coming to an event like that, they're not shopping downtown. They're not, they're not gonna carry a bag around. They're not gonna come into an antique store and buy a piece of furniture. Their, their focus is entertainment and food.
And beer.
Entertainment. They're, they're not, they're not gonna go into the boutique. They're not in the shoe shopping. They're not.
Yeah, so that's why you make the event open to more folks.
Yeah.
And pull in more. And that's maybe what this, what a company could help us do. So I am, I am for looking at the third party.
All right. All right. We won't hound that anymore. So the next item we'll talk about is staffing. So I know that, um, the last time during the budget process, um, we had a, a list of staffing. So wanted to, uh, within your packet, um, I don't know what page. Uh, it starts on page three of your presentation or in your, your booklet there in your packet. Um, so all I have up here is the actual titles. So look at a part-time volunteer to part-time staff. Basically, that's the, uh, assistant fire chief. Uh, we got three full-time firefighters. Uh, again, that would bring, uh, uh, a fourth, uh, full-time staffing per shift, per person shift. And then you've got, uh, two utility crews. So that would be funded out of the water fund. So I know that many of you are aware of, uh, the amount of time and effort that our utility staff has been having to work on our large CIP project. Uh, we can't keep up with the, the leak, keep, keeping, uh, you know, on top of all the leaks that are, that occur throughout the year. And so this is putting together two utility crews. And I know the, the mount looks very large for the public fair. But that also, that includes personnel, includes, uh, the equipment, you know, there are two backhoes and two, uh, large pickup trucks to be able to carry, uh, uh, the employees back and forth to the sites, as well as radios, tools and uniforms.
Yes, that's not just payroll.
No, that's not payroll. So everything in these numbers, these are estimated numbers. Everything in these numbers includes, uh, salary benefit and any equipment that's, that's associated with those employees. Um, and then we've got two patrol officers. Uh, we got one traffic enforcement officer. And then one part-time library clerk, and then, uh, one, uh, parks and recreation specialist, and then a second code enforcement officer.
Jason, I just wanna tell them it's on page eight of the handout that's on your desk, not the actual one that we emailed out earlier.
Yeah. So if you, in your packet, if you look in your packet that you got, it's page three, will show you the details of what all that encompasses.
Utility crews, is that adding them completely, you know, as eight people? Or is that putting together two crews out of what we already have?
No, sir. That, so that is adding, uh, one, so there's three, six, six FTEs.
Okay.
So three per, uh, per crew.
Okay.
A backhoe and their pickup truck.
Good.
Now, if you have any questions on this, staff's here to answer any questions you might have specifically. But I would like for us to prioritize these. I would like for y'all to prioritize these, um, so that staff knows where, or at least where I would know where council would prefer for these to, to be rated. Sorry.
Do you wanna know that information now?
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, yeah. So, so this is a good time for y'all to have some discussion about them. Um, the, the other items is, this is the big one. This is, these are the big ones that, that we talk a lot about in the budget, uh, process and through the budget meetings. And so I wanna make sure that we're, we're heading these off at the very beginning. And if there's something that you don't think needs to be on the list, we can cross through it, or it may, or it moves to the bottom of the list.
So on, on the firefighters, you're adding three full-timers, is that what you're proposing?
That's correct.
And what's, what's driving, what's driving that? That's a lot to go from where we are to that. I mean, I know we probably have more calls, I guess, obviously.
Yes, sir. As, as we're continuing to grow and our call volume's continuing to grow, we're just looking to add a little at a time each year. Instead of when things happen that we, we're stuck behind the eight ball and have to add a bunch at one time. Reason it's three, you gotta remember, there's three shifts. So you add one per shift. So that way, it puts four full-timers on per day, and then we have one roaming part-timer per day. So our hope is to be able to create like a crew and a half, so we can handle multiple calls at one time. Right now, we're basically tied to one call at a time. Now, of course, if there's a major fire, I mean, it, it's gonna tie everybody up and we're still on one call. But, so we would have one engine crew of three, and then we would have a crew of two that would float between, uh, the booster, which normally takes the medical calls, uh, bring the second engine on a, on a fire, uh, bring the rescue truck on the wrecks. Bring the tanker on the grass fires. Or the tanker on a out-of-city house fire.
Are we still open on the, the idea, the possibility of having a substation of some kind on the west side of the tracks?
Yes, sir. And that's, that's working towards that goal as well. So, uh, right now, we don't have a station over there. Could we possibly put something up temporarily and put a two-man crew over there? Three over here, two over there. We could do that too.
The hardest part about this is that you don't ever, I mean, you're just like insurance. I waste my money paying for insurance until you need them. And then it's a problem. Uh, how often?
Care to the waste. Just cut it and delete it.
Uh, how often do you think that we are either delayed to calls because we're on other city calls? Or that, um, there's multiple medical calls that are happening at the same time that we don't have? So, so taking out just the fire piece of it, all the other calls that you go on, how often do you have somebody? How often are we back-to-back or on top of each other receiving calls?
I don't have those numbers, but I can tell you it's happened more and more frequently. So, I mean, if we're tied up on a wreck, then in a medical call here and the city drops, we don't have a crew that can split off. Now, if we're tied up on a wreck, so is EMS. So it does delay the response for us to get there.
I'm just curious, how much, how much of this could the county be looking at helping to absorb? If the reason that we need this is because we're fighting wrecks and fires out in the county? And I know that you can't answer that, but.
Well, since, since adding the new ambulances, have our, have our, uh,
Well, they added.
We had to respond as often as we used to?
Yeah, we're still responding. Uh, we're still first responding for them. Um, there are some calls we have and our call numbers had dropped a little bit this past year because we are trying to scale back some of the non, well, they're trying to filter some of the calls that, uh, people are calling 911, or especially like our nursing homes are calling 911 when it should be a transfer call. So they're trying to filter some of those. And so it's, it has reduced some of our call volume, but it, it's still, uh, push, pushing 1,700 calls a year. And for, a lot of times, we only have two guys, cause we depend on our part-timers. And when they're, like, right now, we have some that are deployed to the panhandle. We've got some because their departments are participating with TIFMS and have crews deployed. They're having, they're being held over at their full-time jobs. So we're not getting, when we get in situations like that, it leaves us a little short.
Do we have to respond to the nursing home?
We do not have to, no. And that's what I'm saying. We're trying to weed some of those non. But your major calls, yeah, we still do go to those.
Yeah, I just, the, from what I'm seeing or have heard, it's really, you're at the nursing home when, when another call drops and then you're waiting to respond to that because you're tied up at the nursing home.
Sometimes it does happen. But soon, and as soon as we can, we get out and we go to the next call. And we still have volunteers that do come in and respond for us, but they're not gonna come in and respond to medical calls. Cause most of our volunteers are not EMTs.
Yeah.
And so they're not qualified to respond to those. But the ones that are, do, will come in and try to pick up some of those calls. But there's few and far between of those guys that we have.
When, um, I think the last two fires that we had here in the city, I've seen South College Station responded down here. Do they send us a bill for that, uh?
No, sir. No, sir. We return the favor. We don't, well, we haven't really gone to College Station, but we do respond to South Brazos County Fire Department and assist them.
Do we request them or they just hear it on the radio and come?
No, that's requested. It's, it's an auto, it's, gotta be careful here. We don't call it automatic mutual aid. But it's, it's set up in our protocols. So if we have a working house fire, structure fire, commercial, residential, whatever type of call, College Station and South Brazos County then get notified and send, uh, personnel to assist us. And the same for them as well.
Better be safe than sorry.
And, and that is the, that is, of course, it goes deeper than that. Because if it, say if it's a commercial fire, then we may go to a second alarm and that will pull maybe Bryan and then Montgomery and some of our county departments as well. So it's, it's a mutual aid agreement and it, that's how it's done throughout the fire service all over. Larger cities, they don't have to depend on it because they use, they have, like Houston has almost 100 stations. They can normally put more people on a simple medical call than we can on a house fire.
Yeah, I just noticed one up on, um, Blackshire in, uh, La Salle. I was up on that end that Sunday.
Yes, sir.
When South College Station pulled up, when they pulled up, they didn't ask any questions. They just jumped out and started.
Yeah. Because we've already been communicating with them on the radio. They, we work together well.
Okay. That was good.
How many do we have right now, full-time?
Full-time? Uh, we are budgeted for three per shift, so nine.
Nine. The national average is supposed to be at least two per every 1,000 people?
I don't, their NFPA says we're supposed to have four per truck.
Per truck. I was just looking at how many per thousand and trying to figure out, cause our current projected census is gonna double in the next 10 years. So.
Yeah. So like I said, we're trying to prepare for some of that and we're trying to add slowly each year versus having to add a whole bunch at one time when we're, when we get behind.
How often are we 100% staffed?
I would say about half the time, about 50%, where we have all three.
Yeah.
And then our part-timer, about 50%. Part-time is, it's fickle. Like I said, they have their full-time jobs and if they get short there, they get mandatory held overtime. Uh, so.
What is the number one call? Is it fire accidents or what?
Number one call? EMS calls. That, so that could be a variety of things. I mean, that's, that's from sick calls to heart attacks, to strokes, falls, motor vehicle crashes.
But not all of our firefighters are EMTs though?
Yes. The paid staff, they're, they're all EMTs or paramedics. Yes, sir. It's, the volunteers are not.
And I know, I think I asked you this last year and I think you told me, but I forgot. Why do the fire department respond to all of the, uh, the calls for the ambulance service?
Cause there's usually just two on the ambulance and they need help. Plus, we can get there quicker most of the time. Cause there's only two ambulances floating around here in the city, uh, and they're out on calls as well, because they cover a large area. Uh, we have medic 31, medic 34, which medic 34 is technically allotted for transfer calls, not, uh, emergency 911 calls. But they do get used that a way. So when those two trucks are gone, our citizens have to wait on if medic 33 in Stonem's not tied up or medic 14 in College Station's not tied up. So there's still some waits. Um, believe it, like I said, this is a busy little city.
Well, once, uh, the fire department, um, get on scene for a, uh, medical call, do they actually work on the patient or?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You just can't, you just can't.
We just can't, we just can't transport. We start, we start patient care. We have, we have, um, all the airway equipment. We have some meds that we carry. It's basic. We keep it basic. We don't, we're not wanting to get into the ALS side of things. Uh, cause that gets pretty complicated and, uh, expensive.
Has St. Joe said anything about increasing the number of trucks that we have?
When the county gets ready to fund some more money to them. Like I said, they.
It's our county. Where's our county people?
Thirty, thirty-one and thirty-four.
The prison should have contracts of their own to handle things like that. The state of Texas needs to step up their game.
The, the, the medical side is through the University of Texas Medical Branch, UTMB. It's actually totally separate from, uh, from the correctional side.
So just to.
It's, it's a big whip. It's, it's.
Arcadia? Arca-, what was the name of that?
Concord.
Concord? Sorry. I don't, they don't have a station here, right? So it's only if some pre.
And unfortunately, uh, it, they, they don't wanna wait and so they pick up the phone, call 911.
Yeah, I've never seen that ambulance company.
Gets hung with it. They're, they're working, they're trying to work out some of the kinks of it, but, and try to make it better. Like I said, we're doing things we can to try to reduce our call volume, uh, to, but, you know, there's only so much we can do. And people call 911, even if it's the nursing homes and, you know, they say they've got chest pains. I mean, that ramps up the call. And so now, when you get there and that's not what you find, it, it is what it is. I mean.
Well, I remember when they first added the, the service of the, uh, and, and again, it's, it's a, it's a ser-, it's an added service for the residents to be able to have the comfort of knowing that they'll get, they'll get a response. That's the way it's always.
Our, our staff, like I said, they're EMTs, paramedics. The only thing they don't do is they don't, we don't transport. We don't put them in the truck and take them to the hospital, but we can provide quite a bit of service for them. So.
Chief, is there a way that you could, you could go with two new firefighters instead of saying that you wanted three? I mean, i- if we could fund two, would that be sufficient?
I mean, along the lines of what you were saying earlier about incrementally.
We could always try. Yes. It, I mean, something's better than nothing.
So we did the last two years.
But it's.
Instead of us being hung up on three, which, yes, you, you need more firemen. Yes, the police need more policemen.
But, you know, we're not talking about three on each shift. We're just talking about adding, you know, so you, you get, then you gotta sit down and figure out what shift gets shorter.
And that's for you to figure out.
Well, I mean, you know, unfortunately, it, calls are the same on A shift as they are on B and C shift.
Oh, sure. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, right?
Change.
And I'm gonna assume when we, when we do build the new firehouse, I know that your dream is to have the ability to have the bu-, the, the ambulance bus be able to park there, to have a place there. Is that something that we contract with them at that point? Are they gonna be helping pay for the space that they operate?
They'd be glad to house with us, but when I talk to them, uh, they don't sound very willing to pay rent to stay there. So.
Yeah, they've got a good deal with the hospital, I'm sure of them.
Yeah.
Don't have to pay anything.
Yeah, that's kinda hard for them to justify moving out of something where they're not paying to, into something that they're gonna have to pay.
It's pretty central there at the hospital, so.
But what you have to look at is down the road, and I'm talking about 10, 15, 20 years down the road. Yes, we're gonna build it to be able to do that at some point. Is it through our own contract? Is it through Navasota Fire Department taking on the, the whole full transport service of EMS for the city of Navasota?
Which eventually may be the case.
And that may be the case. And so you, when you look at the design of the fire station, that. And so you, when you look at the design of the fire station, we're getting way off, but you know, that, that will be factored into it.
Any other questions for chief?
God bless you.
Y'all have any questions for our police chief on, um, the patrol officers or the traffic enforcement? Does everybody understand the traffic enforcement one?
The traffic enforcement, they're gonna stop that Jake Brake from downtown every three o'clock in the goddamn morning.
So the, the traffic enforcement is a commercial, uh, motor vehicle one, so.
That seems to be everybody's complaint.
Well, so I'm confused. When we talked before, it was just a traffic unit. I don't know that it was CMV or.
Correct. So, so we current, in the current budget, we, um, have a traffic officer.
One.
But, one.
With their car.
With a car, correct.
Okay.
This is for a, uh, another traffic enforcement officer, but will be specifically for commercial motor vehicle.
Okay.
Gotcha. Waits and inspections.
Eighteen wheeler going downtown.
Which again, yeah, I mean, there's obviously a need for that. And if there's any way you can contact Google to get them to fix their maps so they know to take the truck route. Might help a little bit.
Yeah, I agree.
So is that position filmed? That, the, the current traffic position?
Step on up, you're the next contestant.
So the current one, the traffic unit, it's, uh, they actually, cars in the shop still getting outfitted because it takes forever for the bus. Once, uh, we do get patrol is the concern, as always, taking all the calls and all that. Once that's fully staffed, that traffic u, officer will go into the traffic unit full time. This one proposing now is another traffic unit, more like a truck, uh, still can do anything, run, speed, stop the regular traffic stuff. But with a truck, that way they can have the equipment for CMVs. So if they wanna enforce the truck route, they can sit down there. Their, their primary focus, they don't take calls. But our, our primary focus for everything is patrol, taking calls and all that. And then the secondary is gonna be the traffic division.
And I asked the same question as the, the fire chief. What is, are you fully staffed right now with the positions that you have?
No.
And we don't, are you typically fully staffed for those or we always are, seem to be missing one or two?
It's, it varies. Like currently, we can't, really don't wanna say too much right now. Uh, once our backgrounds get done, we will be fully staffed. Uh, we have a lot of people in. We had a lot of applicants and we're doing backgrounds right now, so. Give it about a month, you'll see the weekly and it'll be very good.
Okay.
So the CMV will allow you to run more traffic, I'm assuming, on Highway six within the city?
So, yeah, it's, uh, the patrol officers, that's why I have two other ones. This is gonna give Patrol Division three officers per shift. Uh, they can focus all calls. The traffic division, it's only, you know, having two, they only still can only work, you know, their forty, uh, so hours a week. So they have to, they'll change their times if they need to do school traffic in the mornings or if it's high volume in the evening times. They get to flex their hours a little bit more so they can work Highway six for the speeders, for the, uh, major crashes, we know, slow down. Same with truck route. We have more, maybe during the daytime, they're gonna be focused on the daytime truck route violations.
I'm not advocating this, but, uh, do you estimate that, that the traffic enforcement officer would pay for himself?
Well, just on that last, uh, annual update, in the two years that I've been here are just patrol guys and they, they're not traffic officers full time. It was ten to twelve times the amount of citations they issued from two years ago in twenty twenty-one to last year. There was almost, I think it was over twelve hundred citations they wrote last year. And, uh, two years ago, it was less than two hundred. And that's them taking calls and handling all the offense reports and all their paperwork where these guys are dedicated one hundred percent to traffic enforcement and crashes. And they're also, the traffic unit focuses on the, they handle major crashes. So that gets the patrol guys back on to calls to handle the calls in the city. And the traffic unit will stay out there and work the major crashes, DWI crashes, fatalities and so forth.
And I always hear people make comments about if you write more tickets, you get more revenue, but I mean.
No.
Isn't it true though that the state gets?
State gets.
Probably three quarters of the amount.
Very high percentage and judge will know the more.
Yeah.
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 So the city does get more on, um, city violations if it's one of our city ordinances. But the whole focus is that the unit that's in there now, it's, it's a marked up unit because we're out there not to catch people and hide and so forth with a ghost unit. It's gonna be marked up to prevent and teach folks.
And your thing on LaSalle that shows you how fast you're going, it slowed me down.
Would that traffic officer also maybe be able to maybe do a little more in the area of like loud, loud vehicles or?
Yeah, that's, so the equipment part of it is like the, this truck, um, it'll have the equipment needed for the CMV inspections and so forth. They also have tint meters, they'll have the school reader.
The equipment.
They have all that. So they're gonna enforce all traffic, uh, city, state violations. And that's, they, they don't have to handle calls when, once we're fully staffed and have the three per shift, then that traffic unit is fully in, capable to go out there.
It would address a lot of things.
And they can address everything else that.
You're unable to address right now.
As the city grows, the same as fire, they're handling more calls and more calls. And these guys, you, you get the patrol guys that are handling calls, they don't have the time to do the traffic. Because there's a lot of times they're gonna call the call the call. And these guys are just strictly, they don't have to take calls, they're out there. You have a complaint in subdivision for speeders or running stop signs, we're gonna push them in that area. You have an issue with the truck route, that's where they're gonna go downtown. We start seeing more crashes on Highway six, so.
So Mayor, uh, and Josh, I think you asked about the, the staffing piece. Uh, so one of the things that I know that the police department has experienced recently, well, we do have some of our younger officers that they chase the money. And, uh, there are a couple cities, uh, within an hour, hour and a half distance from here. They're paying in, in the eighty, eighty thousand dollar range for lateral moves. Um, we can't afford that, nor will we ever be able to afford that. Um, I, I think we provide our, our employees, just all of our employees, a really good benefit package here. I think the atmosphere within the police department is totally different than when it first came. I, I, I think there's a lot that we can provide that other, uh, uh, departments can't. And so I, I think, uh, coming in the next budget, we're looking at doing merit increases as well as hopefully some cost of living. I think that'll help out some of, uh, the employees. Uh, but the big thing is the merit piece. And so if you're performing well, you'll get a boost up, uh, but, you know, it, you're not gonna get eighty thousand dollars. Uh, we just can't, we can't afford that. Uh, the other thing, I wanna make sure y'all are aware of that the chief's working on a couple items. Uh, along with the, the eighteen wheeler, uh, truck traffic is really defining the, the, what that entails. And so we have a lot of concrete trucks, um, that have multiple axles that come through downtown and we have the capability of limiting that. And so that's something the chief's gonna look at is how we define, um, the heavy trucks. And the other piece is looking at our noise ordinance. Uh, currently, we don't have decibel readers and so ideally is to get some decibel readers in the next budget and then come back to you with the ordinance that actually defines what, uh, noise abatement is, uh, and what hours that occurs. And then we can start enforcing that. Any questions for the chief?
Yeah, but I do wanna understand, um, the truck route, um, that, that, what I understand goes the Piedmont Road, which is thirty ninety Piedmont and then back through past the cemetery and up over to, what is that, three sixty-two?
Three sixty-nine.
Three seventy-nine.
Three seventy-nine, just there. And that needs to be ramped up to hold a truck to start with. How do we get that fixed?
So, uh, my understanding is that's, that's our, um, from, from, from LaSalle all the way to, to Washington is our responsibility now. And so that's something we need to add on to our, our maintenance, street maintenance plan. Yes, ma'am. I know that, I know that, uh, that Jose and his group, uh, they worked really hard on the turn right as they're at the cemetery. That was really rutted out. And so when they did the same, the cemetery, uh, uh, streets in there, that they did fix that. So it, it has, we're just gonna need to continue working, uh, on the maintenance part of that. Yes, ma'am.
I didn't understand you to say that.
What section is.
That North LaSalle is now ours? Or are you talking about the?
From North, from North LaSalle. Yeah, Blackshire.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so.
The Blackshire part that runs.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I thought you, I thought you said.
Well, we are working on some stuff. I actually have the officers that are very interested in the, uh, truck enforcement. They've taken photos, they've done measurements from the distance of the sign to where the truck route ends, the corners. So we're getting a bunch of stuff prepared for a, uh, update of the ordinance.
Awesome.
Any other questions for chief? All right, any questions, uh, from Tiffany for the library, the part-time library clerk? Okay.
I mean, if we're gonna keep up the, what she's got going there, there's.
Yeah.
She need, yeah, there, she needs some help.
And then, um, uh, the Parks and Recreation Specialist. Any questions there?
Is this, um, so this would be like the assistant?
So this, so this is, uh, so this would be under, under Ryan's position, uh, more at an hourly rate, um, actually out in the field doing things related to Parks and Rec.
Programming.
Programming, actually doing the pro, actually doing it. Like being at the Navasota Center, doing, uh, and again, we don't have a job description yet for this or anything laid out. Again, uh, this is something that, uh, Ryan put together, uh, through the process. And so, uh, we have identified that there is an additional need to be able to start, uh, ramping up that programming. And there'll be more to come for this soon. And so I don't have a lot of detail on it yet, but it, it is a position that we probably need to really look at in order to, uh, move forward with the quality of life for parks.
Could you give a little more detail on the utility crews?
General.
That's a big chunk.
Yes, sir. So the two utility crews will be three staff members per crew, which is one heavy equipment operator and two technicians. So then, uh, we would have to purchase, uh, a backhoe and a truck for each crew. So currently, we're responding to a total of about three hundred and fifty to about three hundred and eighty water leaks a year. Um, so right now, we have three members, one crew and a water department. And then we have one gas crew. So we're having to pull from other departments to try to, um, keep up with the water leaks and the new, um, construction that we're having as well. So when I talk about new construction, that's new water taps, new sewer taps, so on and so forth. And then we also are currently, um, our gas tie-ins that we are doing is about a hundred and seventy-five a year. And that's mostly on the west side of town in Bacon Lakes. Um, but we're not able to maintain our system. We're only reacting to what's popping up and that's on a daily basis. Um, we can't come in and plan our week out because on the weekend, we get a major water leak comes in. So then that pushes that down to another three days to a week. So it's just a, a cycle of trying to get caught up.
These crews would address potholes as well?
Well, need be if they can. So we just recently filled a position in this budget for the street department. So the street and sanitation crew is also being pulled to help with utilities, um, due to the CIP project. Um, because we're having to, um, exercise the water valves that you keep hearing about. Well, that's delayed our CIP project from being, the roads being paved because we're having to exercise the water valves. Those haven't been exercised in probably forty years.
At least some of them.
Right. So it's, we're having to pull staff from streets and utilities to help our manager out, our CIP manager, Edwin, because you can't, you can't do it by just, he can't do it by himself. So every day we're having, that's a three man job, a minimum. So we're pulling from other departments. So that's, it's just, it's just a cycle of just reacting. We're not, we're not able to plan very well to maintain what we have. So we have a currently about seventy miles of water main in our system and that's growing as the city grows as well. So eventually, uh, and we just added two, um, we added a, uh, water wastewater operator. So we're slowly adding back from when we had the layoff in two thousand sixteen. And that was just here in our last fiscal budget. Um, so that would, it, it would kinda give us a little bit of, um, shed some light on the work that's being asked for from the utility staff.
Jennifer, I know this probably doesn't happen, but who is responsible to make sure that, what I would be concerned about, you hire two new crews and you get two new crews, now you got three crews, now you have three crews at one water leak? Who, who makes sure, who is responsible to make sure that that doesn't happen? That we, you know, the, the old joke about how many of your state workers does it take to whatever?
Lean on a shovel?
Yeah.
Or something like that?
The whole water.
Not that we're doing that, yeah, yeah. But there's that appearance on occasion.
Depending on the size of the leak, like right now, a lot of the times we're, we fix a water leaks, what we call hot. We fix them hot, which means we're not shutting down any areas. The guys are having to pump out the water. You've got like four water pumps in there and then you, you, you're, then you're neck deep in water trying to put on a clamp. What we're trying to do is get a, we're trying to do a better job at isolating that area with the water valves being turned and maintenance. So we have a water crew, um, crew, a crew leader, which is Wes Jackson, he's a crew leader. So he schedules out the work. Then you have Michael Bean, who is our utility supervisor. And then al- also kinda, he, he's a working manager, so he'll, you'll see him on a backhoe as well, both on water and gas. Um, so it depends on the water leak, it's, on how many men you have. Um, sometimes you have three, sometimes you have four. It's just, it depends on the, on the job. Now, I will say, um, I kinda keep an eye on that as well because I, I look at the, the, the overtime. Um, I, I look at work orders, so on and so forth. But it would go from Michael Bean to our crew leader.
So we already have that set up where somebody would be responsible to make sure that these crews aren't all at the same place at the same time.
Correct.
Where they can be most effective.
Correct, correct. So we, 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 we try to spread out the, and it would be great if we could get both of those crews because then we can go and maintain our water valves. We can, we can paint, we can maintain our fire hydrants, you know? We wouldn't have to outsource a contractor to do our fire hydrants. We could start doing that in-house. We can do the painting of the water valves where we can locate those water valves better. We can paint, you know, just.
I think it's great, but I, I don't, I don't think we'll ever get there. I think we've got so much work that it just will be fixing.
We are a little behind on our infrastructure, but we're, we are trying to get caught up. Um, I, I think the new development too is putting a strain on staff. The, um, an eight million dollar CIP project really put a strain on staff. We've never had one this big and so we're just, we're treading water, uh, well, literally treading water.
Right, right now, right now you have a, a water crew and a gas crew.
Correct.
Each one, what, three people?
Uh, and my, and the gas crew is three. However, they run calls that Daphne dispatch out that we get from the community. So that's, that's one doing that call. And then our line locates who, eight-one-one call before you dig. So that's about fourteen hundred a year that someone has to locate our utilities.
That's under utility, uh, under utility billing right now.
I'm sorry?
That's under utility billing now.
No, sir. So we, uh, are, are, uh, in our gas department.
Okay.
Um, one of the staff members, um, will locate the, uh, the eight-one-one calls.
Okay.
Since there's so many of them, we're having to cross-train, um, multiple staff in our department to, to tackle that amount.
So, so you have the two crews.
Yes, sir.
Maybe plus one person. And under this, you're gonna end up with four crews?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're doubling this. Okay, so you're doubling the size of, of the essentially water and gas.
Hopefully, you know, hopefully, gas crew won't have to come back over and help unless there's a major.
Right.
So, the delay on-
We feel that, we feel that we need two more crews, not just one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Ideally, we want to be starting being proactive and not reactive.
Right, and we just, we're just reactive at this point. Um, we, we delay progress, I will be honest with you, we've had a builder come in and pay for new water and sewer taps, and it took us, sadly to say, four months to get over there to, to get it done. Because we had to keep rescheduling this home builder to keep up with the CIP, the water leaks, so on and so forth. So, it's, it's just constantly, we're not, we're not, you know, we're not keeping up.
Can we contract out the water leaks?
You can, it's very costly. So, for someone to come to our town and fix a water leak, for instance, um, the North LaSalle water leak that was up on by Stone Ridge not too long ago, I think it was in November. So, uh, we had Kishnik that was in town, um, was able just to bring their equipment from over there off the CIP area, and that was a little over nine thousand dollars. Um, which was a heck of a deal, to be honest with you. Um, but if you bring in someone else, maybe another contractor coming out from a town, you're gonna pay them at least six to seven thou, six to seven thousand dollars just to bring their equipment in. And that's not materials or labor.
Well, if, if, if like you asphalt the road and we hire a contractor to come out and do that, I mean, there's, there's water leaks up and down Washington that we could have a crew probably just bring their stuff here and stay for a month or three or a year or whatever. Just curious, is that, is that more than?
So, I think we need more longevity.
I, I get you, but at some point we have to get caught up with, or at least get ourselves in a position where we can, the one at the library has been there for, I don't know, six years, but it's always leaked. Uh, the one that's over by, um, the feeder road right in front of Walmart and by Jims. I mean, there's that little piece that's right there that's, and that may be part of the car wash.
Car wash, it's runoff.
Yeah, that's just runoff from that, right.
As well. But anyway, there's another one that's been there for a little bit, kind of like, not Brozig, but Horlock, maybe, Horlock in Washington.
And we, and we go, okay, we're gonna schedule that next Tuesday. Well, then you have a blowout over there on Justin Street or wherever.
Yeah, 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 I get it.
So, that gets pushed off, it just constantly-
My question is, what's the cost for a contractor to come in and just do that? And do the little repairs that we know that have been out there for years? That way, y'all don't have to worry with it anymore. I mean, what is the?
Well, I mean, it, it's a rough estimate between ten and twenty thousand dollars for a contractor to come in to do that.
Okay, pardon that, GIP supposed to take care of?
And, and, and we do have a budget item in our, in our budget. A lot of times that we bring them in is if we absolutely cannot, we don't have the manpower or the equipment, or it's too deep. Um, and, you know, we don't have shoring to get down that deep, it's too dangerous. So, that's when I would use a contractor to come in.
Are, are we having more leaks this year than we did last year?
We, it, it kinda is almost the same, um, you know, the year before we had the bad freeze, so we had a lot of water leaks on that. But that was a, a lot on customer side. Um, the, the, the summertime is a lot. So, we, we do range anywhere from about three to about three-fifty that we, that we respond to.
Yeah, I'm just sitting here thinking, um, when we talked about the budget last year, about the same department, when you all was requesting two new employees.
Correct.
I brought up that, is that enough?
So, the two new employees that were approved was, one was a street maintenance laborer, which Jose, um, got. And then the other one was the water wastewater, um, operator, which we did get that approved. So, that will help us out at the water plant and the wastewater plant and the lift stations. So, those guys maintain our water system and wastewater system.
Separate of the utility.
Yes, so they have their own tasks that they do.
Well, I guess I'm getting back to when I first came on, I think that when we had the department meetings and everything, it was some cross-training going on, so that's not going on anymore?
We, we cross-train every public works staff that we have. But we, we can't, we can't keep up with the water leaks even though we have everyone cross-trained. If you pull them off the, to do, let's say, water leaks or gas tie-ins, then you're not maintaining your water plant or your wastewater plant, so we got behind on that. So, we've had to pull Matt and Brian to help with water leaks. Well, then our lift stations are not being maintained. The water plant maintenance is not, you know, that's why you see some of our big budget items up on, coming up.
Can you tell me now, um, how many leaks are pending to be repaired now in the city?
At this moment, you, we probably have roughly, on top of my head, fifty that are just-
That many?
Uh, yes, yes, sir. We have quite a few that are pending. Um, because you have, on a daily basis, something comes in, um, to add to their list. Um, new water taps, so on and so forth. Yes, sir, it's quite a bit.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Do you have any other questions? I hope I answered all your questions.
You did, yeah, it's, this is just a difficult process because everybody wants more staff and nobody wants to pay more taxes, so.
I, I can imagine that as we grow as a city, that every single year, every department is gonna need more staff, period, end of discussion. For every thousand people that move into this city and we're expecting another four thousand homes to be built within the vicinity of this city in the next three years, that's eight thousand people. Well, eight thousand people generates at least three thousand calls. We don't have enough employees to call, to answer all of those calls and stay on top of it and do all of the things. So, I know nobody up here wants to have to do all of that, but at the same time, and you're just tasking all of these people for doing five times the job and then mad at them when the job doesn't get done.
Well, and even with, and even with the CIP.
Hot ass, but, but, the people outside of this hall that don't pay attention to what goes on in here, which is fine because they elected us to do that, but they're the ones complaining. Not generally my favorite word, and, and I hear about it all the time. And, and what they don't realize is that they're doing three times the work where, with half the people, and then having to justify it.
Well, with those, those hires that we did a year or so ago, those barely got us to the point of where we were before the layoffs, right? I mean, that-
I, I think all your staffing is just getting back to that, that level. Any questions about, uh, Lupe's, um, second in code enforcement office?
Oh, we definitely need that.
So now, so now, before we take a break-
Eric is, I mean, he's done an incredible job of, I mean, being that he's the one, the one guy.
So, Mayor, before I, uh, recommend us taking a break, because I know you wanted a, a break, uh, somewhat in here. Uh, can we prioritize these, please? I know it will-
Yeah, six o'clock would be a good time.
Okay, well, good, so you, so you got, you got eleven minutes to prioritize.
Well, I think that maybe a break would be in order to discuss the-
Okay, alright.
Discuss it with, in our mind.
Okay, then, uh, Mayor, is that what you prefer? We can come back and then prioritize?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, you want a break for?
Yeah, take a ten minute.
So, Mayor and Council, if you will, do the honors of trying to prioritize these staffing would be great. Or if you don't want to prioritize, at least tell me which ones you want on the bottom.
I have, I have something that, that came up, and I'd like to ask, uh, Chief Tchakowski. We didn't talk about the part-time volunteer, uh, the part-time staff. And I was wondering if we could fold that into the three full-time firefighters?
Not really, no, sir. I mean, he can take calls, but, uh, his duties would be different than just riding a truck. He's gonna, part of his, some of his duties, he's gonna oversee like, uh, oversee the training, fleet maintenance, um, responding to calls when I'm not available to be the incident commander, uh, assist with calls, um, especially on major incidents. Um, and as we look forward to building the fire station, help be a project manager for that, for that station.
I don't know that any of them need to be at the bottom, but, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I think you, you, you either have, you either have a, it's not an all or nothing, but it's, they all have their own merit.
Okay, so, so question, so if Council sees these items on, in, in August, you're good?
I'll be here.
Okay, I got you.
Well-
I mean, ideally, I would love to fund all of them, but I, I'm being more practical. I don't think we're gonna be able to fund all of them, and so, uh, if, if you're fine with it, then, uh-
Well, I mean, if, if nothing else, could there, you know, could there, we could at least look at a, a certain level on, on all areas?
I, I, we would definitely, definitely want to be able to look at something, that something is funded, so it, some of the fire and some of the police, I mean, because that's in, ideally-
Public safety should be probably at the top.
We should get something out of that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think we, we can definitely work toward that. Um, I don't think we can sway on, on the utility crews, I think you really need to do the two utility crews, uh, to keep up with what we got, uh, and-
I would think that anybody in this city that is paying taxes right now would think that we needed more utility crews.
So, um, and so if you're fine, I don't want to put you on the, on the spot there, but what I'll do is, we'll, we'll, I'll come back uh, through the budget process and do, we'll do what we can financially about trying some way.
And look, look at, look at, on, if, as an option, what could be done incrementally possibly?
I got you.
Maybe, some this year, some next year, maybe, something like, as an option.
Okay, alright. Everybody good with that idea? Okay. Alright, so next, I want to talk about, um, these are, the next item here are items that were included in this current year's budget. If you remember, um, these items were moved over to the capital projects fund for discussion in the spring, and here we are, springtime, we need to have those discussions, and these were, uh, items. Uh, each one of these items were in there, the, the additional ramp to the northern part of the airport, if you remember, we funded the utilities, uh, uh, extension, so the, the north end there has utilities now, but there is no ramp. Um, and I have this in here, unless, unless Council has, we want to be sure to do this. I, I prefer not to put this in the budget. Um, again, staff has requested this because it's been requested that they've had, uh, from pilots out there and people wanting to build hangars. Ideally, somebody wants to build a hangar, they build a hangar at the very end, they, they put their money in, put the ramp in, and then as others build their hangars, pay a portion of that back, if not a hundred percent of it, and then whoever put it in the very first gets their, all their money back out of the process.
And also, isn't there funding available through Text Dot?
So, so one of the things that staff's looking at is, yeah, there, there is some funding that, that's through that, but we don't know if it can be used for new construction for a ramp. Uh, our current ramp is for maintenance, uh, and we don't know if we can use that, but, but I know that our public works director and airport manager is going to be looking at whether we can use that, but right now, um, again, we budgeted it, and what I'm saying is, I, I do not feel comfortable moving forward with that, but I wanted Council to be aware, it is an ask. And if we can find other funding or another way to fund it, I don't think that we should be using general fund money.
Yeah, my thought would be if, if we could get the funding from, through Text Dot Aviation, um,
Okay.
then consider it, but maybe, again, not from-
The next item is the two dispatch consoles, that was at the last council meeting. Uh, we are in the process, we submitted, uh, the application for the grant and loan for that. Ideally, we'd like to try to get them both at one time, um, and so we haven't heard back. Uh, so once we hear back from that, then we'll be coming back to Council, uh, determine next steps for it, but just, again, it was on the list, I want to make sure you're aware that these are items that we really need, that one we really need to, to move forward with.
Right.
What about a grant on that one? I thought we was going, trying to seek a grant on that.
We are, it is a grant loan combination, uh, so the grant is only up to fifty thousand. Uh, and so the remainder of that, the hundred thousand, we could get through a loan through the USDA. And so, we've submitted for both the grant and the loan, and so, once we hear back, we'll come back to you and let you know the results of that.
Okay, you just got the one fifty-one just stated in, in here.
So, um, uh, and the next item is upgrade the AV system here in the council chambers. Last year, we looked at that, uh, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, we've talked about it. We're fine with, there's other things I think that's priority right now, again, it'd be nice to be able to update the AV system, uh, but I think there are some other things that we really need to focus our attention on, on that, so it's, again, the reason you're seeing it here is because we told you we'd bring it back to you. It's staff's recommendation at this point, we don't do anything unless Council is adamant on, on moving forward with working on, uh, upgrading the system. However, if there is an opportunity with our new agenda management software company, if they have a lot less cost to, for companies that they work really closely with, then we'll bring that to Council if it, if it's advantageous on a financial standpoint. But right now, staff's not recommending spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on AV, uh, council chambers. The next item is the, uh, three Union Pacific properties, uh, we'll talk about that in just a little bit, uh, as we talk about, um, downtown parking on another slide, but just make sure you're aware of it. And then the new fire station design was another item that we had in there. Uh, as we discussed earlier, ideally, you issue debt, uh, you can ask, you can issue debt for just the six hundred thousand for, or whatever the design part is, and then come back and issue for, uh, the, the cost, uh, for, uh, the construction. We prefer to do it all at once, and so, at, at this point, we're not asking for any action on the six hundred thousand. So, on that whole list there, uh, we're not asking for, uh, any action at this point, except for the two sixty-three that we'll talk about in another point in the slide presentation. The next item, next several slides, uh, these are your department CIP requests. And so, they're broken out, uh, by, uh, funds. And so, um, I know that when you go through the slides here, you get through two-point-six million. I understand that's, that's a huge number, but I also wanted to, uh, let you know that if you remember last, uh, January, uh, we went through the, uh, utility rate study. The utility rate study, uh, the contractor that, that we worked with, the consultant, asked us to project future capital needs in the water sewer and, uh, uh, gas fund. And so, uh, I don't know if you remember this slide? Probably not, but there was a slide that we provided you on the year, year to year. And so, we projected, uh, for, um, the first year of implementing the utility rates. Uh, we projected cash funding, uh, capital projects of five hundred and sixteen thousand for water, cash, uh, for wastewater, five hundred and sixteen thousand, and for natural gas, five hundred and sixteen thousand as well. So, for a total of nearly one point, a little over one point five million dollars in capital for water sewer and gas. So, within your, within those two slides there, water, water equates to four hundred and thirty-one thousand, gas is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, and sewer is three hundred and eighty-one thousand, which is, it's, it is less than what we projected. So, what I'm telling you is, the water rate study that we did, the water rate structure, those, those rate increments that we talked about through the budget process, those will pay for, uh, these capital improvements. So, unless Council wants to go through all the water sewer and gas items on these two slides, we can't. Or we can move on to the general fund ones and talk about those. Yeah, any questions on the water sewer and gas items that are listed here? Now, within your packet, we, we kinda, uh, itemize those out, it kinda gives explanation of what all those are. Just want to make sure that you, see if you had any questions on the water sewer gas ones.
On the two-point-six million?
On the two-point-six million that- On the 2.6 million that's related to water, sewer, and gas. Because there's a couple items are general fund related that we need to talk about.
And if we, on all these items, since they were initially discussed, had time to sleep on them, anything changed?
Maybe some priorities, but...
Yeah. I mean, because it has been a little time has passed since.
Other than some priorities, my point of view...
But again, no matter what the pri, the priorities, the total is been, is covered by what the rate structures were put together.
Okay. Is the cost of these things, um, is it based on contracting these things out, or is it based on being able to do some of them in-house?
The majority of them is contracting them out.
Every one of them on that list was that way. Contracted out. A lot of these, for some reason, have some kind of specialized labor, like sandblasting or things, things of that nature, that make it more of a candidate for a third-party contract.
Are there any of them that we could relatively easily do?
So, again, council member, that gets back to, if we get the two crews, there might be some opportunity, but again, we're doing catch-up with the crews, and so, uh, at some point, maybe, uh, but ideally, contract these out, get these taken care of, and let our crews work on the water leaks.
Uh, up on, uh, north of Sal here, where you have, uh, the detention pond from the new subdivision, saying that the water flow out of that, uh, kind of flow or whatever, is that from the, the detention pond not being the right size or something, or why is that?
So, note that detention ponds, actually, we drove past it in the rain, and it was working as it should. It's more of just the direction that all the rain comes at. Now, you have those, uh, uh, two culverts coming across from Hidden Hills. You have water trying to come down La Salle, and...
Water trying to come back up, uh, uh, at the same time, and just sit there. Next day, rain, y'all look down most...
Down most of our ditch lines, you'll see all the grass laid over in one direction. That means that ditch is flowing good, clean, efficiently. When you go after the next bad rain, go look over there, you'll notice it looks like someone just, just got out of bed, all that grass is every which way. And so, that's really not letting us clear that water as much as we should.
Now, is the water flowing up underneath, uh, north of Sal Street?
Some, but it's also getting backed up, that's why that intersection gets so backed up, and it's part of why that intersection gets so backed up in that area is, there, there is a large, clear culvert, both Jose and I have got our eyes on it, that crosses under La Salle there, it's just on the other side of the horn. And it's always been a horn, but the water has to get up and around and over, and it's just, water doesn't like turning, so it doesn't do it very fast.
And, and one of the other things, council member, is, we, we've heard from a couple of the resident, there's two residents in that area right there, uh, they have been in communication with the developer. Developer says it's, there's, there's not, it's not their issue, um, so Lupe and I are reach, going to be reaching out to Blau Engineering, our new drainage consultants, and confirm with them to make sure that, uh, what the issue could be, make sure that if, if it is the developer, that the developer handles it, if, if it's the state issue, or if it's, if it's us, uh, and try to determine, uh, for sure what some of those issues are. Of course, uh, I know that, so you, you were talking about the old railroad right-of-way ditch there, so the other part is, that's a general fund item, so, uh, in order to do that, that would, that would need to be put in the general fund, uh, so we would need to, that'd be one, those one-time cost items. And just so you'll kind of get some, uh, when we talk about these big-ticket items, so in the current budget right now, we've allocated $1 million to one-time general fund items. And so, that means this current year, we've got about $1 million we're spending on items that won't, we won't, we'll have that money free to do on other one-time cost items. And so, uh, there, there's opportunities here to fund some of these general fund items that's listed in here. Uh, you can fund reoccurring, you just got to remember that, that 1 million, if you, if you fund 800,000 of one-time costs, and you want to fund 200,000, that 200,000 doesn't, it keeps being reoccurring, so you, you don't get to reuse that in, in the future. And so, one of the items in here is increased road funds. So, currently, right now, uh, there is on a utility bill, every, every utility customer, whether you're a business, commercial, whatever, or a resident, you pay $15 a month toward roadway, and those funds are twofold. One helps, a portion of those funds goes and pays for the debt service on the, the large CIP project that's related to streets. It's around 100 and, 150,000 for that, and then the remainder that we get out of that, which is, I think, we're at, less than, right at 400,000, we use on our, the street maintenance, the, the street maintenance program. And so, uh, earlier this year, we did the, the chip seal project, and so, uh, this current year, we're looking at, uh, doing some actual just street, redoing the streets and not doing, uh, the chip seal. So, the proposal would be to add additional 100,000, make a half a million dollar spending on the streets on an annual basis. And so, that's what that item does. Uh, it is not staff's proposal to increase that rate, ideally, try to find the 100,000 within, uh, that million dollars one-time cost, which would reduce that to 900,000, uh, to be able to start adding, uh, more street projects of 100,000. Uh, the other thing I wanted to make note on the list here, uh, was, there was a traffic message signboard with trailer in the current budget, council approved that. Uh, the last big rainstorm that we had, where we had all the flooding, had a lot of, uh, closed roadways, we had some high-water rescues that we had to do, uh, myself and the fire department and the police department went around, uh, doing as much as we could about closing streets and putting barriers up. Many of our traffic control devices, barricades, cones, those type things, uh, are very outdated. Uh, they, they, they bypassed their useful life, and so, uh, what we did was, we shifted the funding, uh, to fund a traffic control devices with a trailer, and so, ideally, we're going to use the 18,000 that was budgeted for the traffic message signboard this current year for those traffic, because we think that's higher priority in case we do have other storms and stuff, so we'll have that. Uh, and then, putting back the traffic message signboard with a trailer. I know that staff has been looking at some other alternatives, whether we go out new or be able to go out onto, uh, a government, I can't, it's a government purchase website, so you can purchase used products that, uh, a signboard that's, that's working, everything that somebody wanted to get rid of, uh, so there might be some opportunities for some savings for that, uh, but that's what that item's for. And again, that was being split between the water, sewer, and gas fund. Um, other general fund items, uh, see if there's another item in here, there's the Cedar Creek stabilization design, there was another item related to, uh, vehicle lift for vehicle services, a towable boom lift, that's the man lift, if you remember. Each year, when we put the Christmas tree up, or when we need to go, uh, do some, uh, change light bulbs, uh, at, at one of the light poles or something like that, we have to, uh, use the man lift, and we have to rent that. This is to purchase one, have it around so that we're able to use it, um, for multiple occasions. So, that's what, uh, the towable boom lift is. Any questions about the general fund items? Again, staff's here if you want details about any of those that's listed, uh, on these two slides.
Can we, can we shop for that man lift, once again, in the surplus?
Definitely, I'm sure we can, I'm sure we can do that, that too, too. Again, we will try to stretch our dollars as the best we can.
What does it cost to rent one?
It varies between, uh, it's at least, every time we use one, it's at least a thousand dollars, like 1,100, and we use it for only like a couple of days. The problem is, when, sometimes when we get up there to a light bulb, and we find out that there's, there's not the issue, we have to come back and try to figure out what's wrong, instead of just change the light bulb. And then, now we have to wait another day, or we have to take it back and rent it again in, uh, another day when we get our parts together. It's just, it's just, uh, a lot easier, and, uh, the 35,000, it was one of like the, it wasn't the cheapest and it wasn't the high price. It was something that we could have used, but definitely, we can shop around and find something maybe a little bit cheaper than that.
Well, and depending on who you go with, you can also get them, you can probably, maybe get it financed as well, you could, in a way, you wouldn't have a one big, big cost.
Any other questions on these, these large items here? Again, I want to make sure that everybody understands, the water, sewer, and gas, that was part of the rate portion, uh, that we put in, uh, for fiscal year '24. So, just so you'll know, next year, or the following year after, uh, we budgeted the same amount, around 1.6 million for cash to be paid for, uh, for, uh, capital items, as well as, uh, 1.6 million for debt, uh, related to moving, as we start moving toward anything needing updates for the wastewater treatment plan. Okay? Alright. So, we'll move on to, these are what we call department, departmental requests. I wouldn't say these are considered CIP in nature, these are mainly, uh, just, uh, capital items that, that fall within each department's budget. So, the first is to replace the 14 SCBA's, uh, and so, that is the breathing apparatuses for fire. Uh, there's $35,000 for a high-water rescue vehicle, one, a utility vehicle in the fire, a metal storage shed replacement at the animal shelter, uh, there's a phone system replacement, there's a couple options there that Lupe can discuss, and some other IT-related items related to, uh, smart access for the Navasota Center. So, the Navasota Center, we, we had to, you know, we replaced the keys, uh, ideally, it's to go to the same badge system that we have here, so we don't have to, anytime somebody leaves, that we have to change keys, or the lock breaks, or something happens out there, it's just all driven by a badge system, and it also identifies who comes in and out. Uh, so, if you give that many keys out, you don't know who it is, but with the badge, uh, we're able to go in and determine whose badge was used to access the building, when it was accessed, and when they left. So, uh, and then there's, uh, mobile data terminals in each patrol unit, uh, for PD. And then, uh, PD has a couple other items, modal CAD and GPS system. Uh, PD has the new internet hotspots for the vehicles. Uh, we are in the process of, uh, we got some quotes for a hiring recruitment management system for human resources. Uh, what that does is, uh, when people go and apply, uh, they're able to fill out, uh, a great recruitment packet, and it goes through the whole process of, uh, putting the system together for applications, once you go through the identifying who you want, sends notices and those type things. Uh, and then, um, there's the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Trails Master Plan. We'll talk about that a little bit later, but, uh, uh, that was just another placeholder for Parks and Rec. So, if you have any questions related to the staff on these items, they're here to answer those questions.
You'll be going to talk about the phone system?
I'm really regretting getting three pieces of pizza.
So, the, the phone systems, we have three options laid out. A good way to describe, um, what the, what's, what each of those options are is, if you think about, uh, your computer at home, you, you're always used to having your box, uh, right, where you put your discs in and everything, your USBs, and then you have your monitor, right? That's where you interact with on a day-to-day. Um, so, option one, it gives, um, we're only going to replace the box. So, none of the, none of the phones that you see, you know, Suzie has a phone over there, none of the handhelds that you see in the office, none of those get replaced, only the box that controls everything. Uh, that's option one. Um, it doesn't have any redundancy either, uh, meaning that if, if that new box dies, then we're, you know, we're in a bit of a bind until we get it up and running again. And that's the current situation that we are today. So, the current phone system, uh, that fancy box, uh, it was put in place when this building was opened, new. Um, it's a great product, it's Cisco, they're, they're known to be workhorses and they last forever if you take care of them. Um, and so, it's been working great, uh, and so, option one basically just replaces that box, um, to, to get our phone system to work. Uh, option two, which is a little bit more expensive, um, it, it brings in a redundant box. Um, so, if, if that box dies, we'll have another one ready, um, to, to turn on and activate right away, uh, if something happens. Um, and then option three is just completely, oh, and, and option two also includes new handhelds, right? So, uh, meaning that we'll have new devices, uh, for every office, um, there's a lot of new, uh, features and new, and new systems that have come out, uh, caller, more, more specific caller ID, maybe even some video calls, some, uh, voice messaging, some digital screens, just to make, make day-to-day, uh, productivity a little better. Um, and then option three just turns it all on its head and says, we'll get all new handhelds, but there won't be a magic box in the server room, it's all on the cloud, it's all managed through, through internet, internet of things, right? So, that means that I could take that, I could take that box or that handheld, go home, plug it into my home router, and if a customer calls me, they have no idea whether I'm sitting in my, in the office or sitting at home. And I'm, we're not going to implement that, right, Jason, but, um, but, but it's possible, you know? And, and the big thing is, is for emergency, uh, disaster, right? So, if something happens, and let's say our internet does go out, you know, God forbid something, something goes wrong, something's wrong with this building, we can, we can literally use those phones on a internet hotspot on your phone, and from the customer, and they will see no difference. Um, it's, it's the cheapest of the options, uh, but it's also, you know, almost, uh, you're kind of, it's a trade-off, right? It's a trade-off between having your box here versus trusting, uh, a, a service provider with those, with that continuity of service. So, um, that's what those three are. One is just replacing our local box with another box, uh, the other is having two local boxes, just in case one goes down with new handhelds, and then the last is just the handhelds with everything in the cloud, so...
What do we know about reliability?
So, reliability, of, of course, option one and two are going to be the best bet. I mean, that's what we've had here for the last 11 years or so, that this building's been open. Um, service is great, of course, if there's issues outside of our walls, you know, if the contractor hits a fiber line on 290 and then our phones go down, which happens sometimes, um, it, it's very rare, but it does happen. Um, cloud, we haven't, we haven't had a cloud service before. Talking to other agencies, I know, uh, Grahamstown, I believe, they use, they use IP, uh, system in the cloud. I, I've talked to a few of their staff, they seldom have issues. It's just one of those deals, it's all, it's all based on internet. Even nowadays, our current phone system, if there's a big internet cut somewhere, chances are that our local phone company is tied to that line, and so, we'll have issues, so, um, I, I think in terms of reliability and uptime, we'll probably have the same numbers for both. Um, i- if anything, maybe the, even the cloud provider option will, um, maybe be a little better, since we do have a backup internet service for the city, uh, but sometimes, it shouldn't happen, but sometimes both internet services can go down. So, I, I think they're very similar in nature, it's just, uh, you know, you, you don't have that box upstairs anymore, it's, it's in someone's data center.
So, what's, what's the current problem with the phone system?
It's just 11 years old, going on 12, probably getting hit 13 years here pretty soon, and while we think it's a great product and it's been working fine, um, you know, we could probably go on eBay and find, uh, the same model for a very, very low price and do some, do some, uh, what is it, uh, what is that, uh, Ganivering or what is it, MacGyvering, uh, and have it ready. It, it's just an old system, it's not supported anymore, so if we do have an issue that goes beyond our scope, then we're in, we're in for a bind trying to scramble to find something else. So, you know, at some point, you got to replace that 15-year-old Honda, even though it runs perfectly, um, you're not, you're, you're going to have starting, you're going to have to start issue, having issues finding parts for it, uh, and that's where we're at with this unit.
So, the, so the issue right now is nothing?
No, currently, it's working perfectly, and it will continue to do so until we find a replacement, hopefully, uh, but that's, that's it, it's just old, and it's time to, to replace it, and it's run, it's, I think we've gotten our money's worth, 12, 13 years now of no issues, really. Um, and, and there is, there is some other deals I'll have to come up with on the cloud option, uh, dispatch, the, the way their system works is a little different from, from city, so I'll have to get creative there on some issues or some problem solving, but it shouldn't impact, uh, from the customer's end, it'll just be internal, so...
Any other questions on the IT items? There's a couple IT items there, so we'll make sure that...
I was curious on the rescue vehicle that, that probably would be used maybe two or three times a year, is there other uses for that vehicle, or would it just... Is there other uses for that vehicle or would it just be for high water rescue?
It could be used for parades, so we get a couple of parades a year.
Are you trying to sell your Jeep to the city?
I am not because, because my, my Jeep wasn't able to do what I wanted to do.
That's what brought up this conversation.
And then not that it performed like it should have, but anyway.
It's a light military vehicle and we can get it, you know, at a pretty reasonable rate uh through uh a government buy deal. Uh it's a, uh what they call an LMTV uh outfit it, but yeah, it could be used primarily what our plan is to use it for high water rescues. Here in town, a lot of times the water doesn't get high enough to launch the boat. So, but as long as we can stay on the roads, uh we can get through it and not ruin, you know, the patrol cars, his Jeep, my Suburban, you know, it, it, and but the other, one of the other uses we could use it for uh outside of the EVACs is we could take it out on the highway and use it for blocking, protecting wreck scenes. You know, if they run into that, into the side of that thing, you know, it's not gonna mess up one of the new.
Man, it was a real reasonable cost was what I was.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it, I think we'd list, figured out it was about ten thousand dollars, ten to twelve thousand to get the truck. And then once it gets in to, there's some maintenance stuff that'll have to be done to it because there again, it's an old military vehicle, that surplus. So there's uh some stuff that has to be done, make it road-ready for the highways. Plus painting it so it'd be ice and red.
Why, why are you still up Jason? Can you uh on that utility vehicle, just right up underneath the high water rescue vehicle?
Yes sir.
Can you uh explain what the, a command setup is on the back of the, the three-quarter ton?
Well, we can, when we're running a, a large incident, that if the assistant chief is in the vehicle, he can set up and run and keep accountability on a board in the back of it. Uh that could be electronic boards, that could be uh manual boards. Uh some of the other stuff that we're gonna use, that it could be used for is towing our boat, tow, towing the spec ops trailer, uh towing the UTV, carrying equipment from fire scenes after, you know, after we get through with a scene. Uh currently we're using uh personal vehicles for, for some of those tasks.
I was just kinda curious when you say command setup, I was thinking it may was a box truck or something.
It, um, I didn't send a picture with it. Uh it, it looks like a camper shell on the back of it. And so it has, you know, they'll have equipment mounted into the camper shell and then it has a slide-out bed and they can set a, a command board. And when I'm talking about command, it, fire service, we set up instant command on our fire scenes or wrecks. And that way we can keep up with what's going on, who's on scene, who's where, and so we don't lose anybody.
We can send you a photo, we can get a photo to you and see what it looks like.
What do we currently do?
We run it out of the Suburban.
The Suburban we had in Dallas?
Yeah.
Oh lord.
You know, it, it, like I said, i- if we're looking at hiring an assistant chief, this would be his vehicle and part of his operations and duties. But there again, it's a utility vehicle in that it's, it's used for multiple purposes. Like I said, right now we're using people's personal vehicles in which we have damaged some people's, some of our guys' personal vehicles uh by doing some of these chores and had to pay for it. So it, you hate doing damage to somebody's personal car, so. Or drowning the city manager's Jeep.
Hey, it didn't cost me too much. Any other questions on any of these items?
Just another quick question. Just say for instance that the, we do decide to get a new phone system. What do we do with the old system?
Uh so we, we, we auction that stuff off and so similar to what uh we do now, we go out and try to find someone that's auctioned pieces off and try to piece it together. It's, it's similar to what the, the police chief does for his, for his dispatch console. They don't, that thing is way past its useful life and when a part breaks, we have to go try to find it and, and there, it, there's like no other parts out there. Uh it'd be the similar thing, so there would be somebody that actually has that system somewhere that might find some value in it. Uh and so we would, it's just like we normally auction our stuff off.
You could get something for it.
We could, but we're not gonna, it's not gonna be enough to pay for this one. But, but we would get something out.
We just don't trash it, we, but.
Yeah, so we're not allowed to just trash. We auction stuff off.
There'd be some kind of return on it.
Yes sir.
Why don't we just wait till somebody sells their junk? Just kidding. I think we must have done that.
Any other questions on these items? Again, I just wanna make sure that you are aware of these so that if you see them in the budget in, in um August that these aren't the fir-, this isn't the first time you're, you're seeing them. Alright, we'll move on to the next part is downtown parking. Uh so as mentioned earlier, we talked about Union Pacific. Union Pacific has three parcels of land that we reached out to them and asked them if they would sell them to us. So um on the map behind you uh is the first one, this is uh right next to uh the Hay Barn, right across the railroad tracks on McAlpine. Uh the other two parcels is on, off of Holland, uh right next to the Theater Alliance property that we purchased on, on railroad in Holland. And then the other one is the long triangle piece that Union Pacific owns that's down on Johnson and, and railroad. Uh so we submitted a, a bid for those parcels, Union Pacific agreed to them. However, there's strings that do come attached to Union Pacific. Uh they want us to do traffic studies, they, they want us to do engineers to look at it. There's things that uh strings come to it, meaning uh you cannot have any overnight stays at those locations. Uh some of the locations is gonna require uh fencing to be put in place, uh just like what is on the, on this side of the railroad tracks. Uh in addition to that, they also will do traffic studies. They'll look at uh the equipment that's at those intersections, so the arms. And if those arms need to be replaced uh depending on the traffic count, um all of that is at our cost. The engineers, the study, anything in the, uh any of Union Pac-, uh Union Pacific's uh time, effort, man, labor, it is at their, at their cost.
At their cost.
At our cost.
Uh, 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 well, we, we pay for it, but it's at whatever they tell us we, we need to pay.
Sounds like railroad robbery.
It, it is railroad robbery. Um a- and so there is a, there is a need for us to, we've got to do something with downtown parking. Based on discussions that staff has had with developers, uh there are numerous number of uh loft apartments that are gonna be coming to downtown as well as some new businesses and we, we've got to start looking at, at parking. Um so uh the parcel of land where, across the street where the uh warehouse was that was demoed that State Farm agent Neil Martinson uh purchased. Uh so uh we, I'm in the process of working out an agreement for the city to lease that, uh that uh piece of property on a monthly basis for staff parking only Monday through Friday. Uh and so hopefully I'll get that agreement pretty soon. Uh there'll be another item that he's looking at wanting to bring uh to P and Z uh and, to council. And should that go through, he's wanting to do a specific use permit for some stuff on weekends. And if that happens, he said he might not even charge the city uh for that, so. Uh but we are looking at staff only, uh so we would be uh having to maintain the property. We need to put signage up that says staff parking only. And so everything that's on that side of the building, parking, there'd be no staff at all. Staff would, would park over there, anywhere, anywhere that staff's parking, staff would be parking over there. The Theater Alliance property where we have sent that money to escrow, so we have a signed uh agreement uh for the earnest money. So we're in the process of moving forward with the purchasing, that last piece to make a full uh square uh for parking for the PD. And that will be a, a gated, um privacy gated um parking lot that PD will use for patrol and uh for any of their equipment, uh the sign, the sign board or any of that type of stuff for that location. And it'll be specifically for PD. Um and so again, that will have, that will start alleviating some parking a- along um McAlpine, along Farquhar and definitely over here will allow some parking for customers to come in on this side for city business. Uh but we do need to start looking at where some other parking could be. And ideally, uh Wildfire Mead uh is getting very close to, to the outside, they got very close there. So we've got to start working on the interior, uh they're gonna need parking. And that parking lot just uh to the north, uh um where the VIP tent was for uh Texas Birthday Bash is not gonna be sufficient for everything downtown. And so we need to start looking for other. And so uh moving forward with downtown parking, um if you remember, uh last year we tore down the pavilion. On the screen behind you is where the pavilion was, uh just north of the downtown businesses. Uh we've went and, and worked with an engineer to put together a schematic there just for the parking lot. So what you see there is parking spaces. Uh you got the parking lot right here, which is right there by the statue that comes down. Now you're opening up where the pavilion was for parking and fixing the parking lot uh that's just right by, uh right behind what, what Duke Street, right there runs into Duke Street. Uh and that's around seven hundred and sixty thousand. Uh and so you've got that plus the parking lot, so you got significant a- an amount there. So ideally, uh the, uh the internal loan from the cemetery operating fund would use that to move forward with the Union Pacific purchases. Ideally, that's what that would be for. Uh try to finish and figure out how much is from that and then we would have to start looking at how we're gonna fund the seven hundred and sixty thousand. And that might be, have to be uh a short-term loan that we actually have to go out for uh to be able to fund a parking lot.
Rich, you also looking at the, the, there's a strip across from the PA Smith on the west side of the track?
Yeah, so.
Between the bank?
I'll let John talk about that, but yeah, so that's uh, we are looking at it, but I, you know which one he's talking about? By prosperity bank.
So we're having to jump lots and lots of hoops for these parcels of land that UP owns. That's actually full-blown Union Pacific Railroad right away. It's not even a piece of legal land, so it's gonna be even more hoops to get to that, that part. It's also right next to the track, so they're gonna not like doing very much around that area. So we, we can look into it, but it's gonna be more difficult than these three parcels are to get hold of.
So ideally, we, we're trying to cross one bridge at a time. And the, the first one is, let's, let's take care of the three lots first. Uh we, we do know that um with, there is some interest uh uh for economic development on this parcel here, whether that becomes part of a, a parking lot or a uh part of economic development incentive, there is, there is that piece. I know that our economic development director, although she's out on maternity leave, uh she has been looking at some other cities of what they've done for parking, just in general. And so uh hopefully we'll be able to bring something in the summer about what she finds about that. As well as funding mechanisms for any uh type of parking garages. Uh so ideally, if you wanna look at something, you might wanna look at a parking garage down here on this uh southern portion of the UP property.
For the other places that we're talking about parking, we're trying to encourage places for people to park that work downtown? Or ones that shop downtown?
I think you're, you're trying to do a little bit of both. I mean, so uh ideally, ideally over here, I mean, so at this, this corner right here, these are, I mean, you're, ideally your people that, that frequent Wildfire Mead are gonna probably wanna park right here because they just walk across the street. Now they might park over here in this parking lot, so you have that. Uh but that's the only parking unless you park right in front and there's only so many parking spots you can park here and then park over here on. So ideally, you wanna start looking at right through here being parking. And that would be uh for Wildfire Mead as well as uh employees that are in the downtown area. As well as if you'll go over to the next slide, uh back here, then you've got parking back here that could be for uh your employees for the downtown businesses.
Cause most of the complaints are people saying that they don't have anywhere to park in front of their building, right? I mean, that's, or at least that's, that comment is heard a lot.
If they were being honest.
So, so we get, we, I mean, we get complaints, different complaints. Um we, we get complaints, there's nowhere to park to go to the post office. Um and they have to park over here. Well, I mean, ideally by doing the other parking lots, now we've moved more parking. So if that frees up some over here, but you've got a couple of lofts that are there on Farquhar. I mean, it's public parking, you can't specify. Now you can put, council can decide if they choose, wanna put some hour limits on it, but then who's gonna maintain, making sure that those hour limits are maintained and, and what if not, our ticket's gonna be written. Um and so, I mean, so those are things that we've got to kinda balance. But people are parked there, it's a public parking. A- and the other part is, we are working, gonna be working very closely with the chamber to come up with a plan to be able to encourage downtown businesses to make sure that their employees are parking off-site and not in front of businesses.
I'm just wondering if we build, I mean, if, if all of this is gonna become parking, if it's still gonna be a problem because?
It will.
The people at the corner are gonna.
There will always be parking, there'll always be.
It'll never stop being a problem, because you look at any major cities, at any of their areas, parking is always a problem.
We've been dealing with this for thirty years.
Correct, correct.
I would say that we, I would say that we have more of a, I refuse to walk a block to the building that I wanna get to than to do a parking problem.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
I think that's more of the problem that we have.
So that, so it gets back to.
I'm one of those too, so I don't.
Yeah, so it gets back to this over here, ideally, I mean, this would be great right here for parking, but I don't think that's the best use of that property. Uh it can't be overnight stays, but it could, I mean, it, it, again, we've had people reach out to us that want it for economic development purposes, building uh businesses there.
Is this normal business practice for UP to do business like this?
So.
We're gonna get you over a barrel and we're gonna have our way with you? Is that, is that normal UP practice?
It is normal for UP.
Okay, I would love to do some normal practice for me, which is since I live right next to UP, is to point out to them that their train drivers are breaking their rules on a daily basis and I'd like to know what those fines are, maybe they would cancel each other out.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, so we, we've, we've kinda came across, I mean, knock on wood, I will tell you, Union Pacific has been a little bit more easier to deal with, with the train stops on the track uh and cl- and doing all the closings of the, the crossings. Now, like I said, knock on wood, hopefully we don't have one tomorrow, but, but BNSF is, is, is the elite um railroad agency to work with. Um you know, we were recently in Temple, um and you know, they're downtown, uh.
It's BNSF?
Yeah, BNSF, it, it's an amazing, their, their train museum there. Train goes through, passed through there, you didn't hear a train, you know, it's not going really fast. It's just, it's nice. Um you think about the BNSF here, we don't really have a lot of issues with them either. Their, their, their horns are different sound.
It's lower decibel.
Yeah, and uh but with Union Pacific, it is what it is and we have to, they're not going anywhere. And ideally, we want this property back on, for the city to be able to utilize, then to be sit there and nothing happen. Cause here's the thing, if we don't do it, someone else is gonna do it. And if the private sector does it, the private sector is going to put limits on what can be there. Uh so for instance, there is a private sector person that's, that wants this piece of property right here to be a private parking lot. Well, I mean, that's probably not the best use of it. Best use of it's gonna be for public parking, not private parking. Because you already have one down here that's not even being used right here that was required to be put in place. So um that would be an awesome place for some public parking, but it's, it's not, it's being used for private. So ideally, try to utilize these, these parcels here, uh at least the, the southern pieces here for public parking. And then to, this could be uh public parking until something determines whether economic development, someone wants to purchase it for uh some economic development purposes, similar to what we did for um the warehouse construction here. Best bid comes in for what they wanna do and, and that, that becomes a selling point of what council and EDC wants to do with the property.
Is the, is the uh Neil, is he gonna actually build something there?
He is, but um he ha- according to what he said, he's got to get enough cash flow saved. He is, but he, according to what he said, he's got to get enough cash flow saved to be able to do anything. And that's at least two to three years out.
Could we buy that lot from him?
I'm sure we could, but I'm, it's probably going to, I could check for you. I could, I could, I could check.
But I don't know how long, I don't know what you pay for rent for a parking lot, but seems like that's going to take some years to get some cash flow.
Yeah, so ideally, it's similar deal, ideally, the way I sold it was, it's similar to what we do for Ketchum Park. Ketchum, we don't own, we don't own that land. We basically pay the taxes. Similar type situation. Any other questions about downtown parking? I don't, no, I've.
It may not be a bad idea to let somebody go in with a private parking lot in that and then restrict the people that are living in lofts to not being able to park overnight on the street. So they would have to use the private parking lot, which would free them up.
Again, that's, that's, that's policy decision for council to look at the ordinance, so.
I would say not, don't wait for U P to go forward with the parking by the creek. In other words, don't, don't wait three years before U P decided to make a decision before we start looking at.
No, we're going to do it all together. Again, I just got to find funding for the 760. But again, I just want to make sure you're aware. Again, I don't, I don't want this to be the first time you see something when you come up in.
The parking along the creek would alleviate a lot, just because it's centrally located.
But I will tell you, just so you'll know, as we move into Parks and Rec, staff has reconsidered and we do not think the best use of the property across the creek over there is going to be for a park. Just FYI. So we'll talk about that a little bit later. But ideally, we've got some other things that we want to work on. So I'm going to turn this over to Kristen in just a second. I want to kind of tee this up about the Parks and Recreation. So just so you'll know, council, you have appointed a great Parks and Rec board. So I've had a couple of times, we've met with Parks and Rec since I've been here. This is the most active and most engaged Parks Board that I've seen here. They were, they did their thorough knowledge of looking through the packet. We had some that actually went out and visited every park before the meeting. And so they understood, when we talked to them about some of the concerns, what those concerns were. And so we met with them on February 20th, trying to come up with some plan about what we want to do. And as you well know, one of our major concerns right now is the swimming pool. And mentioned that last year, we've got, we're leaking about 300,000 gallons a month in the water through the season. And that's just not sustainable. So we need, we plan on having a swim season this year. But from after this year, I don't know what it's going to be. And that's what we need to start thinking about, is what the next process is. And so earlier this year, we went out and started looking at summer interns and wanted to bring a college student in to do a project, to do some park assessments. And the more I started thinking about it, I'm like, I really, if we're going to do a master plan, why not do a master plan specifically for that campus? And when I say that campus, Navasota Center, the swimming pool, and Brewley Park, that whole block there. Let's use the money that we had set aside for that park intern and bring in what we call a phase one of the master plan immediately and determine what the best idea is for that location. And so we presented that to the board. The board agreed, number one, the board agreed, we need a master plan. We need to move forward with the master plan. Number two is, they agreed that that is the primary priority, is to work on that area. The other thing was, that we need to focus on, on those things that we can do immediate, that doesn't cost a lot. And so they challenged us to go looking at all the parks. And so we did. A lot of us staff got together. We went and visited every park, identified things such as a bunch of our trash can barrels are rusted out. You know, replacing those barrels with something that's a little bit more bright and new. Maybe it has city logo on it, maybe it's white, that you can see them. The boards that hold those, they're, I don't even know how long they've been there, but there's just a lot of water damage to it, maybe replacing those boards. There's a lot of concrete sidewalks that are cracked, are missing things, are bridges that are missing boards. Just doing a bunch of those upkeeps, as well as trimming trees and keeping things, the brush cut. One of the things was Grace Park, which I think Councilmember Harris told you about. Our tree maintenance guy went out there and cleaned that up and cleaned up all those trees out there, did all the underbrush and cleared it out. So it looks really good. The mowing people went out there and mowed it. It looks really nice. So doing those things that doesn't cost a couple million dollars to do as a way to kind of spruce those parks up. So that's what the board challenged us to do. So that's what is an immediate priorities for staff. The other part was, is, as I said, looking toward big picture, looking at a master plan and developing some things that we need to move forward with. And the idea behind us not doing Texas Birthday Bash is taking the funds that we normally pay for those expenditures and using those three or four cents on the tax rate, using those funds to maybe issue debt, to do whatever we want to at that Navasota Center and swimming pool complex, whatever that's going to look like, issue debt to do it and then use those funds that we had set aside for Texas Birthday Bash to make the payments, instead of having to increase residents and businesses' property tax. So just re-prioritizing that and moving it over, and that's a way to pay for some of these things. So I'm not, I didn't steal all of Kristen's thunder, but I'll let her go through the rest.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Jason kicked us off with kind of an overview of what we've been doing in the last month or so with the board and with staff. But this is a presentation that we provided to the Parks and Recreation Board. So I wanted to provide you all with the same information. This is kind of what the process we went through of coming up with different ideas and potential funding amounts for some of those ideas for the different parks. So these are our current city parks and facilities. We also have Park Acreage at Piccon Lakes and then of course Grace Park that are undeveloped. We don't currently have any park features on them, but they are opportunities for the future. So we do have a lot of really great parks in our system that just maybe need some love and attention. So some of the challenges, our parks and facilities have faced several years of maintenance neglect. Most, if not all, of our parks and recreation facilities lack ADA compliance. ADA accessibility to public infrastructure is a federal mandate. And so something that we really want to look at doing is working either internally or with a consultant to develop an ADA transition plan for all of our parks, to provide that accessibility to the public and make sure that we meet ADA requirements. Obviously, you know, the big thing Jason talked about is the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Trails Master Plan that looks at everything that we currently have and then comes up with a game plan, a roadmap for the next five years, five to 10 years of improvements that we can make and things that we want to see and implement. And that would also include public input on what the community wants to see at our parks and our facilities and implementing a parks maintenance plan, developing and implementing a parks maintenance plan. And then right now, we know one of the biggest challenges we have is limited staffing to maintain the parks. So that has been an ongoing challenge, just keeping our Parks and Facilities Maintenance Group staffed. And so something that we're still working through. But you know, part of the future planning would be looking at, what do we really need in the future as we grow and as we continue to improve our parks and the way of staffing? So opportunities would be to hire a consultant to develop that master plan, develop an ADA compliance transition plan, develop a Parks and Recreation preventative maintenance plan. One thing we talked about is a minimum park standards list and standards manual, which kind of what Jason was talking about, you know, there's some inconsistencies at the parks. We might have this type of trash can at this park and a different type of trash can or lighting or equipment. Making sure that there's a standard across the board to keep it consistent and then evaluate staffing needs on an annual basis. So I don't want to go into this too much, but again, when you're looking at our parks, if you do go out and visit the parks, one of the things to look at is, do we have ADA accessible pathways to at least one of every amenity in each park? And trying to think about it through the lens of somebody, for instance, in a wheelchair, his wheelchair bound, and ask whether they can.
Sorry. Perfect timing. David Hancock just drove by.
Whether they can. Whether there's handicap accessible parking. Are there accessible pathways to different features in the park? The barbecue pits that we have on site, the water fountains, is everything that we have accessible to everyone? And so that would be one of our goals to look at. What about the swings? You know, for instance, we went on our parks site tour. Maybe we don't have swings for every age of the population. You know, some of them, we don't have baby swings. There are accessible swings now. There's a lot of different types of things that we could do to improve access for the entire population. So that's one of the big reasons why we need a plan in place for that. This is the one that we're trying to accomplish this fiscal year, if possible. Looking at this area in red, which includes the Navasota Center, Pool, Pool House, and Brewley Park. We know that it's a very important historical amenity for the community and a lot of memories and ties to it. And so everybody values that location. But trying to decide based on its age and the maintenance costs, what would be the best use of that area in the future? We have lots of great ideas, but the idea of hiring a consultant is to come in and really look at it from a much larger view and give us some actionable type thoughts and ideas and cost estimates for what some of those plans would look like if we wanted to implement them. So again, this is something we're currently looking at. It is, like Jason mentioned, it's its own master plan for this one area. So we'll probably be coming to council soon with more information about that and next steps for that process. The Navasota Center is our community center. It's used a lot by the community. We have been working with staff to develop policies and implement a software that manages the center more efficiently. But similar to the pool in that area, there's a holistic approach that we could implement to the Navasota Center. There's a lot of other potential uses for that facility that could increase revenue to help maintain the facility more regularly. So again, this is another area that we want to solicit public input on ways that we could improve the facility. August Horse Park is our largest park area, lots of great amenities. And when we went out there to visit with staff, there was a lot of, I guess, low-hanging fruit type things that we could do to just improve the overall appearance of it, that staff has on their priority list of things to do. But again, looking at it for the future of what else would we want to do with that park in the future? And not only that, but looking at what exists today, what needs to be improved or replaced would be part of an overall master plan for all of our parks. Victoria Park is another beautiful park. It is prone to some washout, which you, if you've been there recently, you would notice from the floods that we had or the flooding that we had, I can't remember if that was in January or February, but we had, staff had installed all new mulch in that area. And unfortunately, that rain event came in and washed a lot of the mulch out. So looking at the drainage issues and determining, is that an issue with the structure itself that can be improved? Are there other types of materials that we can use that could prevent that from happening? And again, making it ADA compliant. Some of the things we've looked at too are barriers. So if you are familiar with Park, it does have a fence along the parking lot. One of the things we like to see, because that fence in particular is in disrepair, instead of replacing it, maybe we remove the fence and put in natural barriers, whether it's shrubs or trees or concrete blocks for parking. So some different types of ideas other than a fence to try to create more of an open feel for all of the parks. Ketchum Park is another great park with some older equipment that is not currently ADA compliant. We did talk a lot about what we need to do to make that safe for visitors also. Because of its location, there have been requests by some community members to install a fence. And whether that's an iron-type fence or whether we, again, we use some natural-type barriers to keep children from running into the street when they're out there playing. Looking at some different ideas for that park to install what we refer to as proper fall materials, which could be, for instance, the mulch that's under the playground, but not under, I'm not really sure what this is called. The one on the picture, the one on the right. Even the turtle, for instance, there's rules about if a piece of equipment is used for play and it's a certain height off of the ground. There's a lot of different standards that we should be applying to make sure that all of that is safe. Unfortunately, the turtle is also cracked in some places. I know it's very loved. That has been made clear to me very many times. And so just trying to come up with creative ways that maybe we don't get rid of the things that we have that we love, but making them safer so that everybody can continue to enjoy them.
The shell of the turtle is made out of plywood.
And fiberglass. I painted it.
Okay.
But it does have some kind of cracks in it that, you know, could.
Yeah, fiberglass is like, like glass.
Yeah, it's got a lot of, there's a lot of.
It's in bronze, it's in lime. Yeah, I noticed that when I, when I painted it.
We did get rid of the, there was one of those things that goes around that can actually cut your leg off. That we love to get on.
I love it.
It's gone.
Brewley Park, of course, is part of that campus that Jason was referring to earlier. It's a beautiful park. It's a big space. There's opportunity for, you know, future additions. This would be the city's first truly accessible park with playground equipment and a splash pad, something that we think that could fit there, especially since that's kind of where the pool is now. And if we keep the pool even then, the idea behind the pool is bringing it up to kind of current trends and what the communities in our area are like to see nowadays, which we all know splash pads are really popular, water features, aquatic centers, things like that. So adding some different features there could be a really cool idea. And one of the things we discussed is the Cedar Creek Park design that I love. I think it's amazing. But whether the original location that was proposed for it is the right location or if potentially that park design could be somehow implemented at Brewley Park. So again, with the master plan, those are things that we would look at, not reinventing the wheel. Here are some things that were brought up in the past or some designs that we have. John brought me some old designs that apparently there's been lots of idea planning for Cedar Creek with amphitheaters and lots of other ideas. And so bringing some of those ideas back and kind of seeing which ones would maybe fit the best to each location. Hillside Park, another large park area, very important to our trail system that we would love to see more walkability and connectivity in the city as we move forward. And so any enhancements to this park should also take into consideration parking, which is fairly limited at this time, and then also ADA accessibility. There's a large open space that could be ideal for a pavilion or for other features, park features. But again, this was something that we would like to study as part of a master plan.
Also like to consider lighting too in that park, especially through the trail that goes to Victoria Park. That would be really cool to connect with, do with some lighting.
Yeah, part of the plan too would be to look at our current trails and then what we want that system to look like eventually and kind of a roadmap for connectivity and other things that we would like to see added to the trails. So ideas for enhancements to Pawtucket Pond include a pier for fishing, a walking trail around the pond with a walking bridge over a section of the pond, kind of like we have at Hillside Park. Another big, open, beautiful space. Another big, open, beautiful space with lots of potential. Cleveland Park is currently owned by the Kiwanis Club and they have plans to deed that over to the city. This park needs a lot of attention. With the exception of the basketball court itself, really everything needs to be removed and replaced. Some of this has been cleaned up since I took these pictures, but there used to be a couple of buildings, am I correct, Jason, a couple of outbuildings that were removed, that there's some remnants there that still needs to be cleaned up. And it's a great location too for that connectivity I was just talking about. I could envision a pedestrian bridge crossing over the creek that goes to Brewley Park. So it's a really cool location with a lot of potential. It's just, unfortunately, it's not in a very good state right now and really needs a lot of love. So that's one that we would want to focus a lot of attention on. So all parks in general, again, the major priority is to develop a Parks and Recreation Open Space and Trails Master Plan, develop park concept plans with the assistance of a landscape architect for each park. That includes public input. Ensure ADA compliance at all of our parks. Develop that Minimum Park Standards List and Standards Manual and develop a Parks and Recreation Preventative Maintenance Plan so that we don't get in a situation in the future where we have so much that we have to do all at the same time, but we've been keeping up better with it over the years. Other ideas that could be addressed through the master plan, identify what outbuildings at each park are not in use, which we kind of did this during our site visit with staff. If they're not in use and we don't have plans for them to be in the use in the near future, demoing those structures, make improvements to our ballfields in partnership with the links. Add new features to the dog park. I think our dog park is great, maybe just some new features would make it even better. New park signs and rules signage, new mulch and barriers at existing playgrounds. Some of our barriers are broken or not in a good state right now. New trash cans in all the parks, shade benches for August Horse Park, City State Park, Cleveland Park, and other parks in general. And then look at the undeveloped park land that has been deeded to the city such as Pecan Lakes and Grace Park and plan what we could do for those spaces in the future, whether we have the funding to do something right now or just looking at five to 10 years down the road, what we would like to see. Do you have any questions about the parks and recreation?
Who right now maintains the parks?
So we have Public Works, our Parks and Facilities crew of, it's three, but it's struggled to main, been, be full staffed. And so they do the best they can. They also maintain the cemetery and everything else in the city. So it's, it's been a challenge for them to, unfortunately, when other things get to the top of the priority list, the parks kind of get moved down, so.
We do outsource the mowing. So the outsource mowing takes care of the mowing.
Are they pulled over to water and street department if things are needed?
Also, you can kind of help us set up around here. So anytime that's going on.
And they're awesome. I mean, they are absolutely awesome. It's just, it's a lot of work.
How many acres of parks do we have? Do you have that number?
We didn't put that together, but we can get that for you because we have it based on our, on our mowing contract.
Well, and it's, I can get that pretty easily. Because I had, I worked with Lupe to put all of our parks on a layer on our public GIS map so that people could go to the map and view the parks. So I just need a calculator.
It's not that big of a deal, really. I'm just...
No, it's a good number to know.
It's a lot, exactly my point.
And so you remember, so you remember...
Wow.
Are you for real?
Actually, 135.
So you remember the conversation, I think, Councilmember Harris I had last time, is we, we don't want to add any more parks at this time that the city has to maintain. Not that we will never do any other parks, it's just right now, we've got more than we can to actually maintain. But as these large development comes on, sure, if, if, you know, a 5,000 home development wants to come in, we're going to need to put a huge portion of our park, put a park out there that yes, we would need to maintain. But for, you know, 100 to 200 homes, that HOA needs to maintain those.
But we're still requesting scheduled green space.
Yes, correct. Correct. Unless there's a development agreement that says otherwise, yes. But again, so at this point on the parks, we are going to bring to you as soon as we have the Phase One for Navasota Swimming Pool, Brewley Park plan, try to figure out what that is. And then in next year's budget, it's going to be programming in the master plan to move forward.
And there's also funding sources, some local organizations, I think.
There are some.
Help with a little bit of it and then...
If they'll, if they'll pay for the mass, if they'll pay for the plans, I don't, what I've heard is they want to do some projects. And so I know that we do have some private people that actually want to see something. And that's all great, it's just that first we need to figure out a plan before we see something.
And I don't know whether the Parks and Wildlife might have grants for plans. Would be worth looking.
We would definitely, anytime, again, we, we do as much as we can as in the way of looking for grants as possible.
Well, no, we just don't have that signed grants person now, so it's kind of, I just want to make sure.
So that's something Kristen has taken, her and Maribel kind of taken on responsibilities now. We hope to have it soon. But, but, and so that's all I've got for you, Council. I know that there's been some other things that you had questions about that I've tried to answer most of them. So as you know, we're in the process of hiring a new marketing and communications, so that person's first date is on the 25th. So once that person gets in, hopefully gets, now that not going to be burdened by Texas Birthday Bash, we'll be able to get on track on a lot of other things. They're going to have to jump right into Sounds of Summer, Freedom Festival, get those programmed, but then get back on track for Texas Music City. There's another designation that the governor came up with, a tourist, a tourist city that we can start looking at. I know that Councilmember Peterson, the new marketing person and Assistant City Manager are going to the conference that hopefully find out more about becoming the main street city. So there's a lot of those things, as well as our big CIP project, we still got it ongoing. And so hopefully, again, I want to make sure that you see these things now so that when we get in August and you happen to see these things again, you're like, oh yeah, I remember that. So it's not, not new.
Don't hold us to remembering everything you said about it.
I don't remember what you just said.
You have any, so you have any questions? So the biggest takeaways, we've got to figure out what to do with the Navasota and Swimming Pool this year. We've got to figure that part out. Number two is, we've got to start thinking, big picture, about the fire station. So today, we're able to close on the four acre tract of land. So we closed on that is now we own four acres at Onspur 515, right behind Circle T Truck Stop there. That's where the new fire station will be located.
Go by and visit.
Yeah, go by and visit. We will be, we, staff will start getting in there, trying to clean up some of the shrub stuff at the, on the edge of the property there, to be able to see the property. And then at some point, we'll put a nice sign that says coming, coming soon.
Future home.
Future home of the Navasota Fire Department. We'll put a sign up there for that that will meet our, our sign standards. So we're able to put up a piece of pie, I think it's plywood sign. What'd you say?
Don't put a date on it.
Yeah, I'm not going to put a date on it. I'm not going to put, it's not going to be a digital sign either, so it'll be just a normal painted sign. But we'll put that up. But the biggest part is, we will need to start thinking about what we're going to do about the fire station. It is a tax increase to the public. And so what that amount comes to, we don't know yet. And we will start working toward trying to figure out a company to be able to start working on design work and what that's going to look like. So that's just more to come. But I want to make sure that you understand, in order to build a fire station, there's going to have to be a tax increase. And for all the park things that we talked about, ideally, I'm going to try to repurpose the Texas Birthday Bash expenditures to be able to pay for those quality of life. We were lucky, hopefully right now Tiffany's roof is not leaking. So that has been fixed, so that saved us nearly $200,000, $300,000 for a new roof. But as I mentioned earlier, I mean, there is a lot of needs within the library that we didn't talk about tonight. We do need to start thinking about new drop ceiling, new carpet. The library needs some new love, and so we need to start thinking about that and put that at the forefront of some thoughts as we move through the parks and quality of life. So even though we talked about the Parks Park, the library is part of the quality of life system too, so.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
In building the new fire station, are we trying to put it in 2025 budget?
No, sir. So you gotta, so construction, we're looking at 18, 18 months, 18 to 24 months for construction. Design could be six months to a year. And based on cost right now, it's not something I really want to even try to go and do construction right now. And so we're talking a bit further out. Three years maybe, but it's, it's got to come at some point. Whether we do it bits and pieces where, hey, we issue debt for just the design portion, we get the design portion ready to go, and then wait for some costs to come down, maybe interest rates come down some too. So those are things that we'll, we'll have to look at. And again, looking at our different options, what I mentioned tonight was, we got traditional tax exempt loans, which go out to 30 years, or we do the USDA, which could go out to 40 years.
And also in regards to funding, the, I want to thank Commissioner Cox for being here and Commissioner Walker for being here earlier. We're, we're going to need the county's help on some things too.
Yes, sir.
And I know you're going to work on that.
Now, one of the things that we have not talked about tonight, but we will have a special meeting on it, we just got the information back for the Horlock House.
Good.
Let's just adjourn on that note.
Yeah. Thank you all.